All right, we are at October 8th work session. Village of Minerva Park, it is 6:02. We will do attendance. Mayor Tiffany Southern, go around with us.
Jonathan Martin.
You don't even know your name.
Right.
Dave, Mayor America.
Kathy Passion.
Jason Camer.
I'm agreeing.
And I'm assuming Stacy will be here as soon as she is able. And Eric is also coming, but Eric is running. He didn't know it was at 6 o'clock, so he has an appointment that he needs to hear around 7. So, and I'm assuming they are going to be here plenty of that. I'm gonna try to make this quick as possible, but I wanted to do this, and I wanted to make sure that everybody was here. So, I'm gonna try to start with a couple things, because I really want Stacy to be here for somebody's. And since she said she's on her way, we'll start with some other, maybe something smaller. I wanted to do this because you guys are proof of money. But we internally do a lot. And I don't know, and I think there's some missing links from people as to where we got where we are. And then sometimes I feel like it then comes to you guys, and you guys are like, what's going on? So, this is kind of like a, we have been so busy in here with the street project, with the lakes. We've had a couple meetings with Mike Lickinger about the lakes and about walking paths, and the Minerva Lake Road project, and the maintenance garage. So, it doesn't miraculously just like appear as a maintenance garage in front of you guys. But you guys don't have the time to sit in all of these meetings that we sit through with engineers, with designers, with all of that stuff. And I think that there's, again, some missing links with that, that people don't understand that that's the process, that it eventually comes to you guys. So, this is kind of perfect. So, this is kind of a step back for me. Because then the other part is, is sometimes like I'll have a conversation with Barb, and I'm like, it's, I'll get emails from people, and I'm like, I don't understand why no one knows that this is going on. Because I've been talking about it for two years. But then I do realize that a lot of it is done internally. Yes, you guys are part of all the work sessions and all of that kind of stuff, but I kind of, you know, the people that are concerned about the maintenance garage, and you know, I know I'm recorded and everything. I have talked about, we have talked about the maintenance garage. We obviously need somewhere to put our mower. It's mind-boggling that we're at this part that no one has an idea that this is going on, or this was going on, as a couple months ago. We had talked about it before we even left this building. As to, is it worth of the $3 million? Should we be doing that as one big project? Should it be a separate project? We decided it should be a separate project, because we were, that project was already getting so expensive. So, again, that maintenance garage has never not been on the table. We have to have something to store our tens of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment. So, we then went on to location, we went on to a lot of different things, in which we had those meetings with council. So, first, I'm gonna, I don't know where you guys really want to start. I have everything from the maintenance garage to some stuff about Five Seasons, the striping that she's asked for, the lakes. That one stresses me out. A couple emails that I've received from people that is really just kind of an FYI, I'm not gonna do that right now. We have some issues with some fire hydrants, missing fire hydrants. So, that's something in itself.
Where are they going?
So, great.
Let's do low hanging fruit first.
Yeah, let's just get it out of the way.
Does it take so long? It seems like a routine.
We have, we have four missing, I'll just tell you this, Columbus Fire has, they've done all of our flushing and everything. There are four missing fire hydrants. That's gonna be at our cost, for the most part. We don't know where they are, we don't know what happened to them, we don't know if they disappeared as part of the project. This is gonna be a conversation with Eric and Columbus Fire, and maybe some people. One of the ones is Minerva Lake Road and Westville Road, so we're hoping that that disappeared during that project, and maybe it's coming back. One is at Woodley and Cleveland Avenue. Again, we just believe that one was hit and never replaced. There's one at Minerva Lake Road in Favreview. There is a broken one on Jordan Road. There is another one, what's the one missing? Rose. And then there's one missing at Briar Rose. So, that's gonna be project number 843. So, just again, as an FYI, you guys are probably see some money coming to you guys that we need appropriations to replace those, once we get to that point. This is something new in the last week, but there are at least four missing. If they are, if any of them are just missing because they weren't replaced as part of the project, the Minerva Lake Road in Favreview, I'm thinking maybe that was done when the school was being done. So, maybe that won't be at our cost. Maybe they removed it and they just forgot to put it back, or maybe they're planning on putting it back, or maybe it has nothing to do with that, and it was just never installed. Who knows?
Definitely. We also need to get some info coordinating, like Westville Public Schools is an O-Dog.
Exactly, so that is one of those low hanging fruit. They don't have any information for it yet, so.
Why? The E is always.
This one I'll get to in two seconds. So, that was a quick one, just as an FYI.
Great.
Next FYI. I have two estimates. I will be working with Jeff Taram on this. We reached out to Paul Peterson, the striping at Minerva Lake Road. We already got two estimates for that. We asked them to do the thermo painting. We don't want the thermo painting now at Westerville, I don't believe, at Westerville at Minerva Lake Road, because that road's gonna get ripped up next year.
Yeah.
So, then we went back and asked him for a second quote. It's $47, $55, $30, and that is doing the thermo painting over on Favreview. But on Minerva Lake Road, it would just be regular painting. And then we would redo it after, with the better paint later. FYI, it was $9100 for thermo painting for all of it. So, it's dropped to $4700 by now doing that. So, that's not a bad, that's not a bad thing. But we will be moving forward on that as soon as I find out we have funds. If we do not have funds and the appropriate funding, we will come to you guys for appropriation for that.
Everything sounds appropriate so far.
Um, next, I will just go through these. I didn't forward this to you guys, but we do have some concerns. I'm gonna take this to code and just see what he wants to do with this. But we do have, obviously, a lot of people are aware that we do have stray cat issues all over. And we do have somebody that's concerned that people are feeding them, people are doing all of that, and they don't like, you know, there's people that want them here, and there's people that don't. So, that has been brought to my attention, more so than I thought it was an issue. And so, I will be talking with code enforcement about that. But again, just if you hear somebody say, well, the mayor didn't address it, or, you know, whatever, I'm at least letting you guys know that there are people that are trying to do the right thing, and, you know, all of that. There's people that are feeding them. I mean, it's one, I, I don't have an opinion on it. I like cats, and the rest of the people in my house do not.
I haven't gotten through all the code. Do we have anything about stray animals?
I have absolutely no idea. I'm gonna give it to code, and code, I would assume not. Well, actually, there's, he has addressed some of the codes. Nuisance conditions prohibited, animals running at large. Again, they're not somebody's animals, but if you are feeding them, you know, e, e, e. So, something specific to that, no, but things that address certain things that could be, you know, it's all in how you wanna decipher it. So, but maybe that's something that we do bring to you guys. And then you guys can determine if you believe it's an issue. If you guys want to make something more with that, that's gonna be up to you guys. I then got the email that I forwarded to you guys in regards to some of the European black alder trees and all of that. I'm not really gonna get into this right now. You guys have the email. I will say, I have bigger.
Fish to fry.
Fish to fry right now, as far as reserved space. I'm not saying that it's not important, because my bigger concern is the lakes.
I thought we gave Minerva Forest permission to do whatever they wanted with that.
This is, I think.
Yeah.
They, that was included in Lisa's email before, about all the invasive species, so.
Right, but they're not gonna go in there and start cutting all this stuff down. They don't have the ability, the equipment, or anything. And I feel like that's kind of what these, this is. Here's where I, this email, yeah, I mean, to even think, I, I, so I took a 45-minute walk, hour walk through the village all day. This has been something that we have talked about. We did not do it the way that we should have done it, and I'm done, so I wanna do it the right way this time. But this is what triggered it, was the invasive trees and all of that. Again, everybody knows I'm not a tree person, but I also know when there's a problem. So, as far as the green space and all of that, that's, that's a project in itself. I mean, if you went in there and tried to cut some of that stuff, I can't even imagine the number in my mind. I mean, I'm looking at just the trees around here that need to be cut out, and we're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
You need stuff for two, otherwise just delaying the problem by two or three more years.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even know, there are so many hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars of street projects, sewer projects and all of that, that I don't even know when you would get to a tree cutting down in the ravine.
I mean, I think if we did, if someone could find an eye out for us.
We could get a black.
Maybe that. This is where this is like, and I'm not saying that it's not important, because obviously it's a concern to this person, I promise you it's a concern to a lot of people. After getting that, I went back to, and walking over there and seeing how bad it is again, the cattails in the trees that are growing in the two lakes, and now in the third lake over by Jason's. I did not even, I don't even think there was cattails in there six months ago, or three months ago. Now they've started to grow in there.
Yeah, there were some because they cut them down.
Right. Oh, that does. So, in 2022, I reached out to Aquadoc, because they have, and I'm gonna let you guys know please. I'm not gonna, I'm not a professional on cutting this down, which is why I call people that do this stuff. This is old, this is not even anywhere near the price that it's gonna be now. It was about $12,000 when I did this in 2022. I'd say it's probably grown at least three times more than that by now. The amount of trees and cattails and everything. We hired someone to come in and remove some of the cattails last year, and ended up, in my, again, I know I'm recorded, and I shouldn't say some of the things I say, but it ended up being more headache than it was worth. It was, didn't do anything, it solved the problem for eight minutes. And that's not what this is. They will actually come, they will remove them, they will treat it, and then they will treat, like this is for them to come out and remove them, and then they will also come back out in the spring to treat it again. I'm gonna say this is probably gonna be somewhere between $25,000 and $45,000 to do those two lakes. That's $12,000, and that was in 2022 before it looked like it does. I would say over 50% of the lake is already. You are not getting Brad or anybody to come in into it. We've already went that program. It did not work, and we threw away the money. It needs to be done, it needs to be done professionally, and it needs to be a one and done. I don't know if it's a one and done, it might be something you have to do every 10 years, but we did try to remove them. Brian and them have actually tried to remove them as well. You're not going in there with a bobcat. You are not gonna do it. Not with two people.
Your root system is gonna be a problem. It's gonna be very dense, very thick, very fibrous, not to mention everything already in the seed bag, so it is gonna be a.
They treat this.
Yes.
So, I'm warning you that this is coming. I'm hoping that you guys do this, because other than that, your lakes are going to be gone. If anybody has not been over, okay, actually, this is what they look like today.
There you go. I believe you, I trust you.
Um.
Yeah. Aquadoc's always gone.
This is the small, this is the little amount that's over by Jason's right now.
Oh, yeah, it looked like garbage, like a couple.
Oh, no, that one's beautiful.
No, but the other two, like, yeah, it looks like garbage.
You can't even see the lake. You absolutely cannot even see the lake. There is that small little bit that you can see of that lake now. If you have not walked over by there, and I will be the first to admit that I have not walked by there in a little bit, they do keep the rocks and stuff over by, like, right over here. They keep that trimmed down quite often, twice a year at least. You guys are gonna cut all those down. So, that's maintainable, but trying to get in the water and trying to do all of that. So, that is just one of those things that.
It's just good.
We're gonna let it keep going. So, I lived, it doesn't matter, but I lived in New Albany with the preserve, lived there for five years, and it turned into, this is, it turned into 100%, you couldn't even see the water, within five years. And we're probably a year away from that.
Yeah, our window to.
Yes.
Make it even feasible is wrapped.
I'm guessing 25 to 45, only because the number was 12,000, and it looked nothing like this. I don't know how much it's gonna be. I asked him for a ballpark, and he said he has no idea. And he's seen it, because he is, this is the company that currently treats our lakes. So, again, I trust the fact of, this is somebody we've used, we've already tried in a different route. It didn't work, it's not gonna work, and that's where we are. So, I don't really wanna go too much into detail on that, other than the fact that it's coming. I assume we do not have the money sitting somewhere for that. So, again, that's gonna have to come to you, because I don't know that that's gonna be considered out of the tree fund or anything like that. I don't know if we have money somewhere, but it does have to be done by November, in order for it to be done this year. So, it will probably be an emergency, an emergency, and an emergency, once I get the bid. You guys don't have to do it.
Just reading through that, is that the best approach? It sounds like it says to treat them during the summer months, and then.
It's still out of control right now. No, it's still out of control right now. So, I asked him that, and he said that they would do it in November, but then they would come back and treat again in spring.
So, that, that, if we do treatment and removal, we would just be taking care of removal, so it would be a little bit.
We would just be doing the removal, and then we would be doing the treatment. So, that was, I, and I spoke to him, it wasn't me, an email or anything like that. I spoke to him on the phone for a little while today.
But treatment can roll into FY '25 budget.
Correct.
Do we have anything for it?
And we can ask them to split it up between the two and all of that when it comes to you guys. So, just as an FYI, that was just something that this email triggered. We still, and I shouldn't say that, Aquadoc and I have talked about this for two years. Somebody can request the emails, I think somebody, every day, somebody's requesting emails for something. So, they can, this has been going back and forth, I don't know how many times, but we've talked about this since 2022. We've talked on the phone a couple times in regards to getting this done. Like I said, we did try a different approach that was much less expensive, and we're in the same boat. So, sometimes you just have to spend money to get it done right. So.
Fine by me.
Next thing I wanna talk about, and this is, I'm just gonna be blunt, nobody agrees with me. It is what it is. So, we've talked about this lake, and we have talked about cutting trees down, the dead ones. We've talked about getting a survey of the trees. We've talked about a lot of different things. The approach that some people want to take is to give survey of all the trees, and then determine what to cut down. My approach is, cut the damn trees down that are dead. However many feet they say around the lake that we should cut down, cut down. If we want to do a survey after that, once all of those are done cutting down. Nobody agrees with me, the engineer does not agree with me.
Why?
Because they say that we need to have, in fairness, because then you can say, I want this tree, this tree, this tree.
I don't want any of the trees.
At this point.
Now, hang on a minute, there is, there are some.
Right.
Okay, but like, we can, this is not.
So, here's where we are. This is the process. You're going to spend engineering to put together bid documents for someone to come out and do the survey. They're then gonna do the survey. Then you're gonna pay somebody else to come out, and another set of bid documents to actually cut the trees down.
No, get rid of them, just within that radius that we need.
So, how much money are we investing in? And I will tell you, Eric does not agree with me, I will be flat out, Eric does not agree with me, he will fight tooth and nail to have the survey done first, and I don't agree with it.
What is the benefit of the survey, long-term, for the village?
I, I think the survey after all of the ones are gone, that are already dead, and then we are cutting out, may not be a bad idea. Again, I'm not a tree person.
Here's my, I wanna understand the counterargument, but at this point, I don't understand what the counterargument is as to what is the benefit of delaying spending more money that we don't have to maybe similar result?
Now, I'm not a crazy tree person. I just, I just wanted to hear a little bit.
But if we need to get rid of all those trees, like, what was it?
It kinda starts in the face of junk or dead ash, I'm sure.
So, is, do we need a survey to tell us that, that, hey, we could have three trees?
My view is, if it's, and, and, okay, let's back up. We're using Russell Trees or a tree person to tell us that it's dead. It's not like I'm going out there and saying, hey, Tanner, cut that one down. We're not doing that. I'm okay with that too, but I don't think, okay. So, part of it was, and maybe this will explain some of, like, this is the tree guy. The tree guy took some pictures. This was, okay, let's back up.
Are you okay with that?
No, I have so much going on. So, this was what we sent out to everybody to get the proposals. These are not, once we determine who we want to work with or go through, we can say, how many trees of X, how many trees of this? So, like, this is.
That's reasonable.
I did. So, I think part of it is, we have some estimates that people are like, okay, these are a huge price difference. That's because we haven't really gotten specific yet. We just wanted to kind of get, now, this went to everybody. This was, this was us soliciting, you know, some prices. This is just.
We had, how many, was it, three?
Okay, that's how far. Oh, these are for diameter and breast height, they're measuring by size, okay.
Yeah, that's typically.
So, this again is just an idea of Pennington. And I think we went with Russell as well, somewhere. I don't know where that one is. Anyways, you guys get the gist of it.
So, doesn't, doesn't the original report about the rain reification tell us that we need to remove the trees around the lake?
Yes.
Isn't that, so I understand why.
Well, is Eric's concern at all, oh my God, we might kill a healthy tree? Because frankly, we're gonna kill some healthy trees. There are too many that have grown too far in, we need to create. Killing our lake.
Right.
Exactly, exactly.
I think here's my issue. The problem is, Stacy just asked a very good question, are you okay? Look at this desk. I'm not okay. There's $30,000 to $50,000. Here is $10,000. At some point, somebody has to stop and say, okay, we have a deteriorated pool. We have a lake that's gonna cost us $4 million. We have street, we have a street fund, we have all of that. But we're getting grants, because we don't have the funds just sitting around. We are doing this much of the street, of one street. We have miles of streets. We're doing, I don't know, I'm not gonna say.
Half a mile.
So, at some point, someone has to stand up here and go, I can't put anymore, what is it called, good money after bad money, bad money after good, whatever it is. At some point, you have to go, okay, I know this is gonna cost us, or, you know, I know a survey, the engineering is gonna cost us this, the survey is gonna cost us this, and this is gonna cost us this. I'm not saying that we don't ever need a survey. But I don't need something sitting on a shelf for another five years, or 10 years, or 15 years.
Because we took a survey to tell us that we can't afford it? Okay, cool, yeah.
Because we spent $50,000 to get to the point of getting a survey, and now we're $50,000 in trees we could have cut down that we already know we need to cut down.
Yeah, no, you're right.
But I'm not, so I think that's kind of where I wanted to kind of go through this right now.
This is like us going through, like deciding that this is a DIY project, instead of something that we need to hire contractors.
Yeah, we can't afford a contractor.
This is the worst.
Start with one.
But in fairness, I, yes and no. I do believe I need a tree expert to come in here to cut them down. Again, I don't believe I should be going, hey, Brian, I don't like that tree, go ahead and cut it down. And then David go, oh my God, I can't believe you cut down a million-dollar tree. The money tree, I cut the money tree down. Because I think that some people do truly, they think that there is a money tree out there somewhere. But at some point, I just feel like, no, like, somebody has to slow down, or somebody has to say, okay, here's $10,000 that maybe we need to do, or $50,000 that maybe we do need to do, but maybe that doesn't need to be step one. And the point being, we had, the whole reason that we wanted to move forward, if you remember, and you started it, not really, but we need to move forward on going ahead and getting some of the trees cut down. Well, then that was stopped by saying, no, we need to do a survey, no, we need to do engineering to do a bid to get the survey, and then we're gonna do another bid to cut the trees down. If we keep, the other thought was, I call Russell Trees, and I say, okay, bid limit $75,000. What can you do for $70,000? How many dead trees can you cut around the North Lake and the South Lake in 2020?
I'd be happy, I'd be happy with that too.
Perfect.
And I'm like, but, but no one agrees with me.
I agree.
Can I say that louder?
I mean, here's the thing.
But Kathy. No way it's people who have influence and.
Listen.
If it's dead, it just needs to go, there's no, you don't know.
Even if it's not dead, but in the way. If it's dead or invasive. Yeah, here's the thing, okay, here's how I think about it. Even have a beautiful tree that's next to your foundation, that's destroying the foundation to your house. Are you gonna cut that tree down? Yes, because your house is worth more than a tree. Correct? That lake, because of our love for trees, is going to cost us $4 million. So, we need to maintain that, so it doesn't become a bigger problem. So, we should just clear the perimeter of those trees and reinforce the banks. I think we've discussed this at length, maybe at nauseam, if you will. Why don't we go ahead and do that? That survey is not going to tell me, us, the question I wanna pose to the people that disagree is, what benefit, time, money, or savings will that survey bring? If those are not things that that survey will bring, and I mean all three bullets.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna get a survey done before the end of the year.
Correct, so those things, so that means to me that that is detrimental to our ability to continue to improve the village.
Can we get the trees removed? Is that the goal, is to get those trees removed before the end of the year?
My thought was, if we, and I, and I would have to verify this with Jesse, but my thought is, if we did up to $70,000 this year over in this area, and did $70,000 over in that area next year, that's just a, two different projects.
Right, so we'll call them North Lake, South Lake, two separate projects.
So, that was a point of.
Then, then the second part of that question is, is this grant money that we're trying to use to pay for, or, or the TIF money that we need to spend to pay for?
Perfect.
But I don't, again, yes. So, again, that's my understanding. Well, here's where I'm gonna go. I'm gonna have a conversation with Jeff tomorrow. This is not a voting situation, this is an open conversation that's on a recorded, I'll let anybody listen to it. My view is, I am not discarding a survey. I'm just saying, step one, if we have the funds to do it. Now, I will say, Jeff did mention that, at this point, we don't have to worry about it being spent before May. So, because we're not gonna have it spent all before May anyways. So, that's number one. So, if everybody does wanna take their time and then do the survey, and then do this, and then do this, but I, you know, again, that was just kind of one of my things, that at some point, I just feel like we have to start cutting corners in places we can cut corners without not using professionals.
I don't think we're cutting corners, I think we're being efficient. We're just being smart.
We're not, I, analysis, analysis.
Yeah, exactly, that's it. I can outsource a bunch of stuff. I can outsource somebody doing my laundry, I can outsource somebody loading my dishwasher. I can outsource all of that stuff, but that, that, those costs add up. So, sometimes you have to do those things yourself, because we are capable of doing them ourselves. What's wrong with that?
Well, again, we're not even doing it ourselves. We are calling someone that is a professional and not my work.
Right, so we're just cutting out the middleman?
Okay, so, that was just one of the, and I don't wanna say frustrating, I just, I just feel like,
Don't feel like we're all the same, you know?
Two weeks ago, I kind of went through my emails and did all of this, and that, before I had this conversation with you guys last week, that I wanted to make sure everyone's gonna be here. No, I just, I couldn't even open another email. Every single email was $10,000, $20,000, $50,000, it was just one right after another of the pool rate and this rate. And it's like, how are we even considering doing something with the pool with, you know, all of these, you know, and then.
It's a firewater.
Okay, so anyways, this is the proposed, I just kind of, I wanna pass this around. This is nothing that we have to decide on today, but if anybody sees many discrepancies or anything in this, we've never passed the 2024 handbook.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a 2024 handbook?
Yeah, because we, we sat at a time, remember?
The council, yeah, the council, the rules and all that stuff, we've still never got that. This is for, we never did it last year, for 2024. This is the 2025 calendar, that's gonna go in the 2025 handbook.
No, we, we passed the 2024, and then we, no, that was the revision that we gave.
The revision with Vic's council, we made it simple, so we had to finish it down.
We passed the first one.
Yes, and then it was.
And we have not passed the revised one. Really, it was about the committee of poll. And, and we were on a third reading, so we just need to pull it off and pass it.
Or we just wait till the end of the, I'm not opposed to that, just because I'm still not 100% that all of this is working, not working, or whatever, and we'll get to that in a few minutes. And I'll.
I need to work.
I don't think what you need is in that room.
I think it's a kind of nerve.
And I promise, I'm gonna give you guys like five minutes to ask questions too, but I just wanna go through all of these really fast, and then we can go back to them. So, definitely check like the November and Decembers. I know they do a great job of it, but just making sure you guys are okay with the dates, making sure that there's, do you guys wanna keep Thursdays? Do you guys, now's the time for you guys to start looking at these calendars and having a conversation about that. That's all that was for, was to get you guys to agree on that.
I just wanna say one super quick thing is, as the resident free hunter, I don't think any reasonable person would be opposed to the plan of, you know, here's 75 grand, clear the invasives, take out the dead trees, clear the margins. I, I don't think any reasonable person who understands our situation would be opposed to that, so.
Right, and I, and again, I have zero interest in cutting a tree down, I have no. I want to use someone like Russell Trees to, because I'm not that tree person, I need the advice of a permission like that. Yes, and I, I continue to use their name, we got, I'm sure all three estimates that we got are all from tree experts. I don't know who we would use. It's just I don't know what their names are, so I don't want anybody to feel like we're using Russell Trees. It's just, they're the most common in the village, I see their stuff all the time. But we would, we would still probably resolicit exactly what we would do, or we would come, bring them back out. Again, we wouldn't just call somebody and say, okay, here's 75 grand, go to town. So, anyways, I don't know who we would use, and that, I'm really just saying for the record, but that's just, that's part of it. I'm gonna do this in a minute, because I feel like this is, this might go a little longer. So, rules of council is one thing. We have some other things that, in my opinion, are still, I don't know if you, this is maybe more of a, am I dropping the ball, is somebody dropping the ball? Where are we in this? And I think, I know the answer, and maybe we'll mention it in a minute. But where are we on some of this stuff? So, we talked about the noise ordinance again. So we talked about the noise ordinance again, and I don't feel like it's ever been brought back to you guys, to where we were stopping at eleven, and we were gonna do this.
Yeah.
Was Jesse finalizing it, are we supposed to be doing something?
He was supposed to draw up and come back to us with them, so.
Okay. So Barb, could you maybe do that to your task with Jesse to find out he has been able to redraft the noise ordinance? It could be sitting on my emails that I was so frustrated two weeks ago, that I didn't, and maybe that's that. But it's on my mind, so I emailed Barb at one thirty this morning, um, about something even more random than that, but that's where my mind went, and it does that quite often, at one thirty in the morning.
Shouldn't you be sleeping?
No. So, that then brings me to the tree lawn trees.
What? The tree lawn trees. You know how I feel about it, freaking do it.
So that's why we're having this conversation right now.
Do it, be done with it, I am done with it, I am done hearing about it.
So, we, did we not determine that if they are dead, okay? In the MI section is all I'm talking about. The trees that are in front of their homes, they've all got, if you're on a corner lot, you got two, if you're not, no.
No, four and two.
Roughly.
Ish, you got some trees.
You got some trees, but they are, they're trees, but they're in the right of way. Um, if they wanted to replace them, they, they would just need to replace them with a similar type and, uh, whatever, okay? We have had more than one complaint about lowline ones, so they need pruned or whatever that's called. I walked, again, I'll probably say this three more times today. I've known that that was an issue because I am a walker and a texter and a not paying attention girl. I'm TikToking, and I run right smack that into a tree. I've done it more than once. I don't mean a tree, I mean like a lowline. So it, it exists, it's, it is an issue, um, and it's not, now, eventually the trees are gonna get tall enough, and that's not gonna be an issue. More than likely, and actually, most likely, because again, when I lived in the other, after about five, you know, five, six, seven years, they start to get taller. Okay. Who's responsible for that? So, oop.
I'm gonna do the skirt.
Uh, and I wanna hear all of it, because the issue is, if we pay for it, I'm gonna show you, I'm not advocating for anything, but I am tired of not having an answer for residents. It makes us look dumb, it makes us look like we're not doing our jobs, and we have gone in this circle for how many years?
Two.
A few now.
I'm over it.
We're all over it, and it's one of those that, again, we have somebody that is continually emailing me and asking me about it, and it's like, I don't even know what, at this point, I wanna respond and say, but I don't wanna throw you guys under the bus, because we're, we're all just doing this. And I think it's because the frustration of the arguing, because one person believes that we should just, as a village, pay for it and do it because it's done right. Residents don't exactly know what they're doing, so they just go and cut it, and then the tree dies. Well, but then it's their tree, they gotta pay for it.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not advocating for that, but I'm saying, I, I understand the devil's advocate here. I understand that if we do it, it's done, it's done right. I also understand the cost associated with it, because at the current state, we're not done. We are already paying seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for the little bit of, um, lawn care that we're getting done from Five Seasons. So we're almost twenty grand. Um, we wanted to even add a couple things to that. They're already not doing our tree lawn trees, tree lawn trees. So, our thought was, go ahead, and we've already emailed, and we do not have a price for that yet, to add that into ours, which would be.
They gave us a price this last year, I think it was around two thousand dollars.
No, that was to mulch them.
No, we actually got a price from it, I do remember that.
I don't have it.
Yeah.
I have them printed, maybe I do, let's look.
It was in there, cause it was an option.
Here's the two thousand twenty-two and the two thousand twenty-three, you might see it.
When MI bill, what did our code say?
That we didn't put, that they would put in a tree. There was no, no code to say.
So I think it was determined that if the tree dies, it is the homeowner's responsibility to replace it, correct? With the tree that we determined.
That is what we did, this is what we agreed upon, but it was never put in writing.
Okay, is everybody still okay with that? We're not voting, we're not doing anything, does anybody wanna have, and then, and then Tommy, I'm gonna let you take the floor for a minute. And you can fight out that tree, cause he lives there, and Jason lives there.
Yeah, you get to, you get to have a say, maybe, we'll see what you say.
So, the question is, is everybody okay with when, like, if my tree dies in my front yard, I take care of it?
Correct.
If it's one of those that's, they take that, my opinion is if their tree dies, but do they have to replace it? Do they not have to replace it? And I think many people said that they do have to replace it with something from the non-invasive list.
Correct.
Does that, am I saying that right?
Yes.
The, yeah, native plants.
The native plants, yes.
Preferred plants.
Not the, we can't, they can't replace it with the same Bradford pear, because it's outlawed.
So, then the second part to that is.
Bradford pear, it's outlawed.
Do we pay for it as a village? And I don't know how many trees that would be, but we only have about sixty, no, ninety. We have about ninety of our own. So, that's just the village's ninety. So, I'm gonna go with, there's approximately two hundred and fifty houses, there's at least one per house, there's more than that on the corner lots, not all of them, so there's gotta be at least two hundred and fifty, but I'm gonna go with at least three hundred. Plus ours, so you're probably talking about four hundred trees. They don't all need trimmed, so maybe that's why the, the number was lower. But as you continue, I don't know pruning wise, what it's gonna cost, I have no idea, I don't know if it's done once a year, twice a year. Do we wanna make it our responsibility, do we want to add it to this bill again? Or is that a homeowner's responsibility, so we can knock it out and code can go start putting notes on people's doors?
Yep.
I wanna say.
And sidewalks, we've already determined it is the homeowner's responsibility.
Yeah, sidewalks are. Uh, and I would be curious what Columbus does, because as I recall.
So.
It was in a right of way, but we sure as heck had to. Columbus, here's the thing.
You pulled up yours.
Yeah, Eric argued that when he developed Gulf Village, that it, to back up his argument, he said that it would be Gulf Village's responsibility. I pulled up their current rules of the age away, cause my parents still live in Gulf Village, and guess what? They're responsible for pruning, they're responsible for that tree, they're responsible for keeping it alive, they're responsible for all of it. So even if that community plants that tree in the right of way, the homeowner is still responsible for that tree, and I think that is fairly typical, and I have no idea why this is such a big deal, because I think all of council at that point agreed that it's your tree, you get to look at it, it, you get to, you know, you picked it, or whatever, it's your tree, you take care of it.
Period, end of story.
I'm done, I don't wanna talk about this anymore, I don't think this is.
I think it was in the emails back and forth on what actions we wanted to add to the column. Um, cause I know, I know it was in there.
I'm gonna, I know Tommy wants to say something about this, I'm gonna leave you guys for three minutes to talk about it. Um, but I just, I'm done, I, I want it to where tomorrow morning, I come in here and Barb and I figure out how to write it up.
Yep.
And we pass it as an ordinance and move on with life, or we email it to Jesse, and say, Jesse, and I'm gonna, I'm also gonna take full responsibility, I don't ever think I told Jesse this meeting was tonight. Let me rephrase that, I didn't tell Jesse that this meeting was tonight, so he probably would have been here had he known. Um, but that's something that I can write, you know, we can basically send him an email and say, this is what we want this document to say.
Yep.
And we're moving on with life. And then we can post it on the website, we can post it everywhere, I don't care which way you go. I don't know if you guys need to pass it as an added, you know, an amendment to whatever, but we'll have Jesse write it up. I'm assuming we need you guys to pass it. However you guys wanna write it up, I wanna get it written up tomorrow, and I want to bring it to you guys and be done, okay?
Yeah, put it on, yeah, that one and the noise ordinance, too.
When we, when we met with them in the old building, we talked about it.
Yes. I'm gonna go pull it.
And I'm, I'm ninety-five percent sure.
Tommy, I know you have something to say, it's not that I don't think it's important, but I gotta follow this either.
It's probably in the bottom.
Great, Tommy. Okay, Tommy.
I think it's already, it's ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-three, that talks about side, trees over sidewalks, and having a certain height limit that you have to have it cleared by.
But who's responsible for taking care of it?
Well, if it's in the code, it's not gonna be the village's responsibility to take care of it, it's gonna be the responsibility of the residents, right?
Yeah.
Cause the village doesn't have to follow it.
We're not clear.
But, certain codes apply to certain sections of the village.
Definitely.
Is that.
Yeah, we just talked about this last year, too, about, um, any of those trees that are up front, there's financial responsibility of the homeowners, therefore wouldn't pruning it and all that go back on the homeowner?
Cause there's not a tree lawn in the legacy part of the village.
Like basically, if that tree dies, that person is responsible for replacing it with a light tree, of those things?
No, it, uh, well, I thought.
Requirements for all zoning districts, the followings, the following are street tree planting requirements for all zoning requirements, and then there's general requirements. There's minimum distance, in the area where a sidewalk exists or is proposed, the owner must between trees, uh, edge of the street, the sidewalk, to be two feet, I swear that there's something about overhanging African sidewalk. Heights of limbs over sidewalks and streets, tree limbs extending over a sidewalk shall be trimmed to the extent that no portion of the same shall be less than seven feet above the sidewalk. Tree limbs extending over streets shall be trimmed to such an extent that no portion of the same shall interfere with normal flow of traffic.
Seven feet's like half that tree.
So, I mean, it's, it's, I feel like it's already codified to.
Yeah, I mean, I would read it that way.
I feel like Jesse.
No.
But you're Jesse's.
Yeah.
But, but Tommy and Jason, is this gonna be something potentially where the residents of the new section feel as though things are being changed on them? Or do you feel that it's easy enough to say, look?
It's something that's just not that interesting.
Okay, okay.
It's, and the same thing with sidewalks, it would probably be a great reminder to send a flyer or some sort of, like, hey, guys, we know this might be news to you, but sidewalks in front of your house are your responsibility, as well as the trees in the right of way.
I think you said something in the newsletter back in the spring about the sidewalks, right, and about.
I think so.
I do remember saying something, sorry.
Very, no, and then, uh, do we, do you all remind them in the winter that they're responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house? And, you know, keep it clear in case anything happens?
Yeah, that'd be a rip, it's a dender, too, when we talk about tree leaves. I think it's a great time to prune up your tree, get your branches out.
Perfect, I just wanna do that, and then we'll be done with it.
So JP, if I remember correctly, I think what we ended up deciding, and I could be wrong, is that if the tree dies of natural causes, it does not have to be replaced. But if it, like, let's say someone backed into the tree.
Yeah.
It has to be replaced, and there were certain requirements on whether it is replaced.
That is a pretty big.
Certain sizes and all that, it has to be replaced.
I, I think that would be fair.
I mean, I think that's what we wrote into the code.
I don't, I don't quite remember exactly that point, but I do recall, we were kinda going back and forth over the details of it. Um.
Because my, I made the point, I was like, well, if I can do what I want with the trees in my lawn, well, I'll cut all five of them down, and don't have to worry about them, right?
And that's when, um, I think, they might have been writing a mercy, you had to maintain them and stuff like that.
I feel like, it's like, you know, if you get a regulation mailbox, you still have to have a mailbox, you can't just not have a mailbox.
But I do think that the residents should be like, hey, look, you gotta water it, you gotta prune it, you gotta, just like the sidewalk, you gotta shovel that, it's your, on your property, you know? That way it makes it easier to stand with, and we can move on to bigger and better things, you know?
I mean, I'll tell you, I had one of mine that was not doing well, and I went on vacation, I came back and someone cut pieces of it, like, I don't know who did it. I'm still, I know I asked Brian one day, I said, did you do it? I assume one of my neighbors did it, they got tired of looking at the dead branches and took them off, but.
I, I assume you do that.
No, I, I'm cool, I think that, it's a division of labor and a division of cost, and I feel like it's, it's, if it's in your little right way, and it's a two hundred dollar tree, I mean, if it gets knocked over, then fix it.
Yeah.
What more legislation do we have to pass besides this one, I mean, I don't.
So it's something more enforcement issue then?
Yes, but may, so maybe it also needs awareness based, too, I mean, that's kind of.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Do we need to postcard these people, and, and then say, hey, just let you know, we will be enforcing this code.
Well, honestly.
And if not, we'll send you the bill, it's like cutting grass.
Honestly, it is the MI section, we're not really, no one's saying anything about the legacy section.
This is like very new baby, you know, change of.
Yeah, so honestly, just sending out, just sending out something to the MI section doesn't sound unreasonable to me. You know, some type of postcard that, you know, even if it's an oversized postcard, right? You know, a, a four by six or something like that, that's bigger, that says, hey, here are some reminders, like in the spring, about the trees on the.
Yeah.
You know?
Trees and sidewalks are a resident's responsibility.
Right. There's some tips for trimming on them.
I improved something I wanted to bring up while she's kinda gone for a second.
The rocks in the tunnel.
Yeah, so unless you guys have the tunnel. Just not, not the bit, yeah.
But down by the tunnel, whatever, um, there's these rocks that are starting to get scattered everywhere, the big rocks.
Oh, yeah.
And what's happening, this pathway is getting eroded, so two things are gonna happen here. This pathway will get all pretty much eroded, and it's gonna cost us a gazillion dollars probably to fix, or we can take these rocks, somehow place them back up here and backfill those rocks, um, to help last a lot longer. It's very cheap and expensive compared to like probably paving that path. Also, there are rebar hanging out, so if kids are down there and they fall, they're gonna get impaled, and that is not obviously a very good thing.
Everybody gets a tetanus.
And, uh, mulching, I can't remember.
So that's something that.
Definitely remember we talked about.
I know we did, I did remember the topic.
And I, I'm pretty sure I saw in, in an email that said, hey, here are the things we talked about, here are the prices, and I think we said, no, these are the ones we're gonna do, tick, 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 and that's what's in the counter, so.
So, that's just something that, regardless of another expense, I don't care which way we go, residents need to know which way we're going, and it is an issue, um.
And if I remember, it was a once a season type of thing, it wasn't an ongoing.
No, it should, yeah, I think.
Like it's done in the spring or something.
I would think it would be done once or twice a year, max, because, I mean, they don't grow that much that fast. But some of them are, I would assume the first time it's gonna be, um, a lot, because, I mean, some of them, they've never done.
Great, Tommy?
So, no, my personal experience is, I've already cut my tree in the right of way. Because I, I think that that, that code that I called out a code that we already have in the books that says that the tree can't extend within seven foot of the sidewalk.
Right.
Or impose on traffic that's over the street. Uh, so I know I've cut mine, because I was like, it was like five foot tall.
Right.
I am five foot tall. And so I cut like three big branches, you know, in the fall, because I was like, hey, you know what, it's just time, what's the point? Let's just.
Do it.
Trim this now, let's change the diaper, as I, um, so no, I, I think that it should be, and we talked about, maybe we should do a postcard to kind of remind people sidewalks are your responsibility, trees are your responsibility. And just a quick hit, seven foot lawn, you know, and if so, then if they don't do that, then code needs to.
Enforce it.
Enforce it, like, you know, in the wintertime, don't forget to shovel your sidewalks in the spring, just, don't forget to prune your tree.
Yeah.
Whenever it's supposed to be done, I don't.
And, and, and the, you know, the restriction step, cause people will just hop, you hack their tree, but if it's missing.
Well, they can also hire, so, I mean, again, I, I'm not saying that not, everybody's just got thousands or hundreds or fifty dollars, I, I don't know. I know a lot of people do have lawn services, and maybe that's something that they can add to their bill or something, just to have to check it, or whatever. Um, again, not advocating for which way, other than the fact that I need to know which way to go, because.
I think we're all.
I feel like.
If people in the office can't answer these questions.
Uh, let's look.
Um, and yeah, I mean, in the old section, that's our responsibility.
I think it's already under the code. At ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-three. It got passed December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Things are even, that, at least that far, I don't know about replacing the tree.
I think we also went with replacing, so we'll double, which one is it? Hang, I need to pee, I lost my, I haven't carried it in here.
It's like my, my microwave went out in my house, and I was like, how much will this cost to fix? And I was like, well, how much does it do, and I was like, two hundred bucks.
Was that part of the college ordinance that we did? What is it?
Ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-three. Third reading on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
December fourteen, twenty twenty-three. And then, so, replace, trim, and then we will have code go out and start. What we'll do is if that is in there right now, we will have code, or we will, um, do a friendly reminder in the next newsletter. And then we will have code go out after that.
And yeah, I think it's, uh, is it under twenty-two?
Does it say anything about replacement in that one?
Nothing I could find in this quick.
JP and I were talking about that. We think that we said, if it dies of natural causes, it does not have to be replaced. But if it gets like hit or something like that, it does have to be replaced and there's certain requirements.
Twelve seventy-eight dot O eight. Okay, yeah, so general requirements, uh, the tree to be planted shall not be in the, not be in a desirable tree species as listed in the appendix C.
Yes.
Recommend that trees in the village may or may not follow the text of the zoning code. Certain spacing between trees, it's all that.
But now that one.
Twelve seventy-eight dot O eight.
Right, but.
I think there was something else too, because I think that was already in there. I think that got passed a year or two before that, when the MI section was going in.
Because we talked about it in depth, whether or not they had to replace.
Yeah.
And, and the, oh, no, I know we did.
Yeah.
Only email I found about street trees, I didn't just remember.
That's the only one I have. Yeah, I can't find it here.
Anything about, that didn't happen in, you know, the last three days.
But either way, if we're gonna make it their responsibility, we have that, we can cite that.
Maybe you just said that to us.
Violations, whoever removes damages or causes to be removed, or causes to be removed or damaged, a public tree from a tree lawn or other public place shall be required to replace the tree at his or her own expense.
There you go.
The replacement tree shall have a middle diameter of two point one half inches.
Yeah.
The requirement provided here shall be.
And, and there are definitely some trees that have been replaced that did not follow that.
Should we.
Or that have been replaced that have been.
What we're gonna do within the next newsletter, we are going to have an entire space. Uh, it is your responsibility for your trees, it is your responsibility to mulch your trees if you want it mulched in your front area. We will continue to do what we're doing, aren't ours, um, and I will make sure that ours get added to. This, um, the contract. So we just sent that over to that. And then, but we will put a friendly reminder in the newsletter that talks about replacing it, attach the code to it. And also the, um, pruning, replacing, all of that.
I wonder if you guys have ever before, uh, suggestions on how to prune your trees?
Maybe they wanna write an article, they could.
I mean, you know, like, it's just something, I guess.
Can you nobody just a YouTube link?
Yeah.
That's how you're supposed to do it.
YouTube.
Yeah, a YouTube link and then like messed up.
We will let all that put in there, um, just so people know. And then I will tell you this. Within a week or so after that goes out, then I will have him start putting notes on, or start doing that. Because there are quite a few that are left.
Yeah.
Quite a few.
The other thing too is you should be like, did you screw up your tree pruning and now it's dead? These are the approved trees you can replace it with.
And there, there are at least six addresses that have issues with their sidewalks and they have still, they have not replaced them. And that's the hard part about having part-time zoning, is getting someone, um, that has the ability to do all these different things that we have going on, there's a lot. So I think what we'll do is, um, maybe for the week, spend time with him for the week and say that, yeah.
So, but that can work, I was like.
Yeah. So that's gonna be, that's something that we need to deal with. And right now, we have a couple other things that we're dealing with with zoning, um, and I'm not even gonna go with that can of worms right now.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, while you're gone, we're gonna still gonna talk about.
Good.
A little low living.
Okay.
For, which is that, uh, tunnel, um, we didn't really talk enough what to do about anything, I just, I'd like to kinda know, be aware of.
Do we need to bring in more dirt or more gravel to cover it up to be removed?
Well, honestly, like, my thought was, if we had someone to grab those big rocks and just make like a little retaining wall as best as possible.
Right.
And then just throw gravel, that would slow down that erosion, god knows, like tenfold. My fear is that if we leave it the way it is, and it washes out that pathway, I don't know what it costs to repave that little bridge, but I guarantee it's gonna cost a lot more to repave that area by that bridge and then put in the dirt. Where we can fix this now for pennies on the dollar, you know what I mean? Just to save us, uh, whether that's rent a small excavator.
And rocks.
Yeah, rocks. But they had, you know, we might have to buy a couple of big boulders to kinda build a little wall, but that would help tremendously in that area. I hate to see that get damaged, you know?
I think that's something that maybe we'll talk to Brian after this and see if it's something that they feel like they could get the equipment to do it. Um, whether it's rented or do whatever, or if they feel like that's something that we should call someone and have someone come out and give us an estimate to do it, or both.
Okay.
Let's get an estimate to see how much it would cost somebody to come do it, compare it to the other, um, because I don't disagree. Water is, as we've seen over the last couple of weeks with these hurricanes, it's nothing to mess with.
In, in the meantime, though, you wouldn't hurt to throw a little bit of dirt on those shrub.
Yeah.
And, and maybe paint it or something.
Yeah, spray paint, but everybody has dirt.
So no one.
Throw a little dirt?
Rebar.
No, spray paint the rebar.
Yeah, just to, I was just thinking, can you spray paint the rebar so someone can be aware that it's there so nobody can.
Is it?
Okay, even better, or there you go, perfect.
Can you guys do that?
Yeah. Or can you cut through the metal? Do you have anything that, do you have any saw blades that could get through, like, half inch rebar?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, he does. Oh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm sure he does.
He absolutely does.
Okay.
We're talking about Tim with all the.
So those were a couple of the quick and easy things, um.
That was quick and easy? Oh, God.
Oh, you haven't gotten the two of us.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, yah, yah.
Now, now it's the fun part. I'm gonna save the last one for when Eric is here. Actually, I'll talk about it a little bit. Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna go over the lakes. Um, we've had a couple of meetings. There's discussion of walking paths all the way around the lake. And I will tell you that there are already people that are not happy about that, because you're going through their, um, there are people that, okay. So that's gonna be a topic that we're gonna talk about. We're gonna wait till Eric comes here, because again, there's money here, there's money there, there's, you know, all of this. Um, but there is already rumbling of some people that are not happy about potentially putting walking paths around it. There are possibilities of putting some walking paths that may connect to other places that already potentially have, that looked as if those were put there for a reason. Um, the engineering is getting ready to start for that. So we are to the point of, we have been working with Mike Flickinger on the permitting. I don't know if you guys remember that, but it can take up to a year, um, to get those. The permits only last five years. So again, this is something that we're gonna be spending quite a bit of money on and we don't want it just sitting on a shelf. So if we are not serious about doing these lakes and getting these lake projects done, then we don't need to do it. Um, it's, I'm not saying that that's, that's where we are. And I do think that, you know, with grant money and with all that kind of stuff, we will get there. But it's one of those things that, um, we'll go into depth on that once he gets here, because he is definitely the fan of the walking path and, you know, trying to make sure. But engineering that is not going to be cheap, because you're trying to get it up around the lake and those places down in there did not look.
Promising.
Well, it could be done, but how much money you guys would spend to do it.
Realistic, how about that?
So, that's, that's where you guys discuss once. I'm gonna try to get him to put some stuff up here.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we'll go from there.
Sure. I wonder how much engineer went into the pathways in the three year round at all?
Is there a recommendation?
Zero.
Zero.
And how long do they last?
Not long enough.
They're still there?
They're there, but we've already had to do some.
They like started from scratch. It's like remodeling versus start like building from scratch. You have to like realize it, you know?
So the maintenance building, um, what we all wanna talk about. We, um, have talked about this for a long time. We put it out to bid, as you guys are fully aware. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, when the residents came in. Obviously, there were residents that are upset that it's even going over in that area. We don't know where else we would put it at this point, so I'm not even going, I'm not going out, okay? This is what we're talking about. We're talking about where we, where we have it. Um, we received three bids. Six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, and seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. I'm not giving you the rest of it, that's just where we are. The published engineer's estimate revised by addendum number one was six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Although our internal cost estimating, um, noted bids could potentially reach a million dollars. One bidder informed us that they would be greater than a million. Uh, there's absolutely no reason for anybody to put a bid in unless they're just doing it because they're bored at that amount of money, because we can't accept a bid that's more than X over what the estimate is. Um, we can only accept bid number one, I don't know if it goes into this further in here. Bid number one, bid number two is extremely close, bid number three, we can't even accept. So, um, anyways, as confirmed by legal counsel, the village can enter into an agreement with the low bidder, because their bid is within twenty percent of the published estimate. There you go. Approximate cost for larger value items, according to master renovations, the basic building, the shell, is a hundred grand.
Okay.
Interior plumbing, sixty-four thousand dollars.
Ouch.
Asphalt, forty-six thousand dollars. Yard piping, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water, forty thousand dollars. Excavating, forty thousand dollars. While we do not have a price for comparison, it is reasonable to consider that the building's location added approximately fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, because we moved it back.
Okay.
As confirmed with legal counsel, this is important, so listen to this part. As confirmed with legal counsel, the village cannot modify the scope of work prior to entering into an agreement without rebidding the project. So we can accept one of these, or we can start over. And I don't mean start over. If we decide we wanna put this closer to the street to save money, if we decide we do not wanna put bathrooms in there, if we, I'm not advocating for any of this, but I'm just giving you guys thoughts that you guys can bring this down. Um, sorry, Brian, I'm just being devil's advocate here. So, you know, we can make it a garage to store stuff. We don't have to make it a garage to have work equipment and, you know, bathrooms and all that kind of stuff, but it's nice to have it, obviously, a place that our maintenance people can work. I'm not advocating for it. I'm, I'm merely giving you guys ideas, thoughts, and you guys can run with some of the things. Um, it is possible to modify the scope after entering into the agreement. Request for proposals could be issued by the contractor identifying potential changes. It doesn't mean it can happen. So we could get into contract with them and say, okay, what if we don't put bathrooms in here and see what happens? They may be able to do it, they may not. But when you enter into this agreement, you're entering into this agreement. Just know that we may or may not be able to change certain things. If you wanna change certain, you for sure want to change certain things, I would probably consider changing certain things and then putting it back out to bid. Um, maybe Mike would disagree with that, but they, you know, they may or may not. Or it may not lower the cost enough to make a difference. You're just not gonna know until you're in contract, so it's, it's a risk either way. Um, I'm not gonna go into this. I'm gonna pass this around so you guys can see this. Um, the recommended next step includes the following. Determine if the village wants to move forward with the project, generally as shown in the current documents. Determine if the village wants to consider, consider potential scope changes to reduce the overall cost. For example, these changes could include, but not limited to, revising the building location to reduce cost for the driveway, yard piping, and other site work. Um, eliminating one of the overhead doors. Again, I think we're talking probably pennies on that, but in comparison. Um, but anything's better than nothing, so there are some things that we could potentially talk about. Determine if the village has other legal contracting options which could be discussed with them. Um, so here's where we sit. Six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we know that we moved it back because we wanted to keep it away from the residents as best we could. Um, I did advise them, I'm saying this, you know, I'm, I did tell them, because before, when it was a little bit further up, we had the sides in the back a little bit more decorative and all of that kind of stuff. I told them, take all that off before we even put it out to bid. So, um, if you guys wanna ask me specifically anything in complete detail, I'm probably not gonna have some of the information. I'm just gonna be blunt. Like, what's going on the front? I, I, I don't know exactly. I don't know if we're using Shaker, I don't know if we're using this. I, I, I truly do not know, is it, I'm not being honest. I mean, I don't wanna pretend that we can change any of that stuff now.
This place doesn't have to be a work of art. It's, I would do this more utilitarian.
As you can see, the building itself was a hundred thousand dollars. That's it. It's everything else that is added to this engineering, the shell, the plumbing, the asphalt. I mean, there's nothing going inside this building. I mean, essentially, there's no furniture, there's no anything in this price. So, this is now obviously gonna come to you guys. We already did our first reading and the first reading will, we would put this information in for the second reading. I'm not asking you guys if you guys want to pass it, because that's not, this is a work session. Um, but this is now the time to discuss if you guys want to put this back out to bid, if you guys want to continue on the path that we're at. Is this something that we're just, it just needs done? Um, again, I'm not advocating for anything. I'm just saying.
That's, I think.
I think we.
Let's do it.
Just keep going.
Let's mend, let's make a nice building, you know, plumbing, bathroom, office spacing.
Here's the thing, it's.
Bathrooms are boring, so I'm just gonna say it.
I, I'm not in the spirit. I'm gonna have, no, I don't wanna say that on record. I was gonna say, I'm gonna have a key that way when I'm walking, I can stop by.
That's the thing, here's the thing though, think of it this way, it's never gonna be cheaper than it is now, the faster we do it, right?
And we're not as.
We're not gonna have it, we're gonna have the infrastructure building.
At some point, somebody's gonna be like, what kind of thing just didn't put a bathroom in this?
Now, are you guys okay with potentially talking to them after, okay, we move forward, you guys, some of you may say yes, some may say no. I'm not, I'm not advocating for what you guys do. Assuming that it passes, are you guys okay with us advocating for potential pricing savings? Um, one thing that we had talked about is potentially making the driveway gravel for a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Or something. I don't know that we would. I'm just saying, I will keep you guys informed as we move forward if there are potentials of saving a little bit of money. Um, like you said, I don't know that it's ever gonna be cheaper, so maybe that's a dumb idea. Um, but are there, I think the only thing I'm gonna ask is this. Is everybody still okay with the location knowing how much it has increased towards you? Is that something after we're in contract, you guys would like to talk to them about?
No.
Or leave it where it's at?
I, I have visited those people in the spring. I gave them my word that we would do our best to keep it down there.
I, I'm not, I'm the one that fought for that to start with.
Yeah.
So I'm not advocating, I just want to know.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
And the location isn't specifically just for them, it's about the future homeowners.
Oh, that's, that was also for the appearance from the street. You don't want this a hundred thousand dollar shack for everybody to see, like, put it back in, behind the trees.
Okay, we will move forward with legislation. Again, you guys can have a change of heart, you guys can do whatever. This was not to discuss, you know, yeses and nos and all that kind of stuff. It was more about the fact that I really did kinda want you guys to understand where we are, what the bids look like, what we're spending on what. Um, there's obviously people still over there that are maybe not the least bit excited or thrilled. Um, you know, we've had public records requests, we've had those types of things. Again, all I'm gonna say for the record is, we have been discussing this for a very long time. As council, I do believe you guys have done, not, I don't wanna throw you under the bus or you, because you guys weren't here for some of that. But, um, it was discussed, locations, it was discussed, many different things, um, before we made this decision to where we are now. Um, and that's kinda where we are now.
I just think it's important to make sure that we share the narrative of what the current situation is.
Right.
And, and how well protected our, you know, the community's, you know, stuff is and what, where it's going to be.
Right.
And then what, there's potential, I mean, you know, to, to increase services or, I don't know. Maybe we buy a truck with a snow plow one day, because we snow plow once a year now, because it doesn't snow at all, or something silly.
But still, yeah.
I don't know, which is something to, if we wanted to get mowers and do our own mowing instead of.
We have tens of thousands of dollars worth of mowers. We have a new TV that's fifteen grand.
I think it's important to make sure that we're sharing the narrative of the story, beginning to end, if we're going to be voting on that.
We have a maintenance team that could, I, I, I don't ever wanna say that we're gonna be able to do all of these things in-house. Again, we're a small village. But I do believe that there will be times in which getting a couple more part-timers could potentially do some of these pruning type things, or could do some of these other, other projects to where it could be, there are potentials of doing things. But we have shovels, we have rigs, we have blowers, we have, you know, I don't, the leaves don't get up and walk away themselves. Our, our maintenance team does that. They cut the grass. They, they, you know, our, this landscape is, our landscaper just does the landscape. Like, we do everything else. We have two really nice mowers.
We're a place to store coal, patch asphalt, you know?
Correct.
Just little stuff.
Right.
What's the bucket of money this comes from?
Tiff.
Yeah, this one is tiff.
Hmm.
This is part of.
And that's the one where we have one point three million.
To spend.
And so this will be.
Anything left over would go towards the lake from that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, this is, I mean, this is investing in the future of, you know, of Minerva Park. I see it as worthwhile.
Of the lake. Next is the big overall lake. Um, this is just to give them an idea of where we are, what Mike is doing. And it's just to let them know where we are right now, show them the walking path that we're talking about putting around this or that.
True.
The, and I'll take full the little bit that we're planning on potentially filling in and why. I kinda wanna go over all of that, so none of this is a surprise later. And then I'll be right back. Again, um, and that is actually my last thing. Do you guys wanna take a three minute break?
Oh, my God.
Yes, okay. I'm insane.
When we get them all to the quarters, did you pause them?
Yeah, said we had to pause them.
Okay, so we get back on, um, we're gonna go over the lakes. And again, this is just to give you guys a, this is where we are. So you guys have obviously been part of every single conversation that we've had about the lakes except. Um, once we bring the engineer in, we've had a couple internal, you know, taking your guys' information, a couple of internal meetings. Um, that has discussed the permitting. Uh, we know that, so Mike went further and double-checked on the permitting, how long that's gonna take. Um, there's certain ways that he could do it that the permitting doesn't take as long. There's other ways that he, like, depending on how you're filling in and how much you're filling in, determines what type of permit you have to do. So we have kinda talked a little bit about the North Lake, we've talked about the South Lake, and actually, I'll back up a little bit. Uh, the first meeting that we had was talking about just doing the South Lake. And again, not necessarily doing a lot with the North Lake. And the reason behind that was the permitting only lasts for five years. So if we can only get that one done within the five years, because again, you're talking about engineering and getting it out to bid and all of that kind of stuff. It's not just getting the project done in five years, it's all of it in five years. So, obviously, I was not thrilled with that, only because this is the lake that's a problem. This is the lake that's already closing in. Um, we have to weed part of the lake. It's a lake and we're weeding it. So, and those are the residents that I feel like have actually, I mean, we've had people complaining about trash for years, 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 all the way down through there. Um, but these have been, and I, and I don't like to use the word complaint, but over in the, over in the North Lake, those have also been people that they want to get their yards back, they want to get their lakes back. Um, some of them just have muck. That's the easiest way to describe it. So, when they, when we started talking about the potential of not being able to get both lakes done within five years, it was obviously a little disappointing. it was obviously a little disappointing for me, because I feel like these are the people that have dealt with this the longest, because this has been done. Um, and some of those residents have been there that whole time. So, we then, Mike came back in again, just to kinda go over everything again. He got more information about the permitting, he got more information about that. Obviously, we have talked in-depth about filling in the one lake, um, with you guys, with pricing and all of that. So, we have since talked about filling in, what is this? Is this the right one? Okay, so this is the right lake. So, show them where we would fill in the North Lake, potentially.
So, like a half-seas?
Not even.
No, we were talking about filling in this level area here, hard to recall where.
Correct, and the reason for that is, is that is where the path would go.
And the mosquitoes are.
Yeah, yeah, that's really shallow, junky.
Right. The reason, the reason for that is, if we do not fill in some of that, it eliminates our ability to,
Have it.
Economically, we would have to build a bridge. If we don't fill in some of it, we will have to build a bridge, and at that point, I don't wanna say we can't afford it, I wanna say that it's, you know.
It just takes time to get the funding to afford it, right?
Correct.
It's not realistic in the time manner in which we have.
So, filling it in makes it more realistic, is the, is the easiest way to say it. Is that, is that going to, you know, upset someone potentially?
Of course.
Um, and I, I do like to point that out, and the only reason I'm pointing this out is, I don't wanna bring up the past, but I'm gonna bring up the past. You have seen that when you do certain things, you get pitchforks. Putting a walking path around here and cutting in, you are going to get pitchforks. I'm not advocating that we don't do it because of the pitchforks, but I'm preparing you guys that I've already had people that are not happy. It doesn't mean that you don't do it. I, again, I know that this is recorded, I'm not telling you guys what to do. But the reason that I'm coming to you guys right now, before I take the blame on all of it, is I want you guys to be prepared that the reason that we're doing this is because it is the most economical for the most amount of people. Now.
And the soonest.
And the soonest.
Do the most good.
And it's not filling, it's, it's kind of, again, not happy medium. It's not filling it in, but it's filling it in enough to where we can make good use of the walking path, make good use of everything.
We're just modifying the lake so it's more usable.
So, essentially, yeah, essentially, we already have these, we established these to auction here. We would, we would obtain easement to come across these two properties. The trick is to make sure that, you know, you fill it in, you engineer to fill in a certain part here, and it gives you the ability to use the shoreline that you already control to come at a certain point. There may need to be some more adjustment, but eventually we get to this point here where this is our ground and we can make the crossing to our.
There we are.
Can we do government alone for a second?
Yes.
When you say obtaining easement, what does that mean? What does that entail?
Couple of things, couple of things from an easement standpoint. So, obviously, from the standpoint of, there are several pathways to obtain easement, and we need an access easement here, meaning there's already easement across much of these two mere properties, and that has to do with the storm sewer system and, you know, water flow and stuff like that. So, there's already a great amount of easement where we can, you know, essentially, you can't build any more paths to point due to the water and everything like that anyways. What we would do is, we would obviously first approach homeowners, have a courtship hopefully discussion come about obtaining easement, and, you know, a grant easement, there's, you know, easement for fee, you know, there's all kinds of ways, and it's usually fairly, easement in and of itself is fairly cheap. If you need to, then, you know, at the end of the day, there's a taking ability for easement too, in which you have to go to court and you get an easement grant to you from the court. If they're non-quantum, it's for a legitimate public purpose, and you would have to go through that process. That's a multi-month process, but it's still with the timelines of how we would do a project. Same thing that they do, they, you have quick take ability with the easement for pre-engineered stuff for roadway. However, multiple court cases, thanks to Dublin setting a lot of case law in this area, I can't just go quick take easement for pathways or right-of-way for that. So, we would have to go through a normal court process for taking easement, if it came to that.
How long does that take?
Easement is very cheap, quite frankly. We're talking around hundreds of dollars per square foot versus thousands, tens of thousands of dollars for to do for right-of-way, and this is easement versus an actual property take, so it's a different, it's a whole different ballgame. Because typically, the property, you're still owning the property, basically, or getting easement that crosses those two areas in order to build a pathway, you know, at most eight feet, so.
How long does that take?
Six months-ish, something.
Just to get the easement?
Yeah, just to get, go through the court process to get the easement. It's, it's, it's only a year's time, it's not terribly.
And again, that's something that we could potentially work on at the same time that he's doing to permit. So, in order for him to, um, get to, again, the reason that we're here is, he has to design at least thirty percent of the design work in order to apply for the permit, which takes time as well.
Right.
So, that's kind of why I'm at this, I'm not at a stop point, we haven't stopped, he's not moved forward yet. Um, but I just kinda wanna make sure that you guys are fully aware that this is, a little bit of this is gonna get filled in, um, so we can get the walking path so we can move forward. So, that was that. Again, that was really the big thing that I just wanted you guys to bear up. Um, now we get to the other lake, and that one's a bit more.
Do you want me to touch on some of the funding from there?
Go for it. Yes.
So, we, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming in from the state for general path, or you could apply it towards the North Lake in this case, in order to do pathway, right? Um, that's a, that's a nice chunk of change. We don't know that you need a full two fifty to do this project. You might, but nonetheless, it's, cuz generally speaking, I have a price point somewhere, this is shorter than, than what two fifty would normally cost us. When we priced out Minerva Lake Road, for example, for the Lincoln's project, um, not including, and, and it goes all the way to Allen Creek and all the way up to, um, the Dakota State Station for the C-Max. We priced that at now, uh, this past year, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Really, the, the proper estimate is probably closer to half or middle because there's trees you gotta take down, there's a few other things you gotta adjust, you know, within the right-of-way. But two fifty goes a long way with just pathway. Since you got some lake stuff, you probably got a little more fills on certain parts of this, as you know, so you, you should have enough of that, no. The South Lake, we are going to be receiving from the federal, from the Mayhem, fifty thousand dollars.
Cool.
Just towards, which can be used in three ways. You can use it towards a combination of pathways. You can't use it for dredging, as I mentioned before, but you can use it for some of that four, four-bay area. And, you know, you, so there's, there's leeway in how we do that project and how we allocate that eight fifty plus whatever's left from your, I would say, half of what your, you know, maybe five hundred thousand dollars left from your tip, to what you can apply towards, you know, this lake project. And then we anticipate each, each year, again, we'll go back to the well in some form and reapplying over long-term for, you know, several year period, whether through the state or the feds, to get more money for particular points of the project. So, we'll eventually, I expect to get money to dredge the South Lake.
Is there any potential, I know there's like a historical marker there, is there any way to explore those as well? For like, I don't know, historic lake, historic area, can we explore that?
It's an interesting suggestion. I, I suspect we would have to have, again, dredging is not that.
We're not calling it dredging. I know he's going for a dredge.
I'd like to say ecosystem restoration. Those are much more OD in my opinion. But in, in, from that suggestion, we could do a creative project similar to what we did for the amphitheater, right? Where we, where we couched it in, I think, historic restoration for that, for the level that. You might be able to do something nifty, a little bit of a pathway maybe, or something that matches what was there in the past. I don't know that we could use historical meaning to do any type of lake restoration, but we could do it in the sense of more beautification.
Okay, just, I would explore that as well. Any discussion? Well, we're not even to the, hold on, let's go back.
Again, the only reason we're doing this is because it is starting engineering.
Is anybody opposed to this, and is anybody not okay with getting some pushback? And let's discuss what are other options.
Well, this is where you're gonna see more pushback, is once we get to this part, and I'm gonna have him show you several things that we're trying to do with this lake, again, to make it more aesthetically pleasing in some areas. I'm gonna have him show you, and then if you can explain, and this is where I'm not gonna be able to. The engineering is going to be a little bit more work to do, I think he was talking about that, yeah?
Yes.
And then he can explain why and how and all of that once we, but now, stop, actually, stop. Where is, where is the original connector that?
So, the original, so you're talking about when it was plowed, and we have it, we have it here, it goes along with that.
Oh, look at that.
So, this is, this is our property, even though people don't know that. This was designed originally for a pathway that would connect the two streets. You can see it around here, uh, on the way.
Sounds real close though to somebody's.
Well, of course it is, but they, that's because they didn't pay close enough attention to it when they originally built the thing, but, but it's still, it's still art and it's still intended at, at, at the original plating for a pathway that would connect the two roads. And that would have to be explained to the three or four homeowners there, and they, you know, and they're not gonna be happy, but it's not their land at the end of the day, it's our right-of-way. So, so it'll be up to a council at some point to make that approval if we decide to pave pathway between the two and explain, quite frankly.
So, that was some of the thoughts of putting, and this is where I said, you're, you, I'm not warning you, but you kinda have to look at it both ways. You have thousands of people that live in the, in the village, it's, I don't wanna hear it anymore than anybody else. It's going to make a lot of people mad when you put a path directly through their backyard. Some of these yard, how long, how, why do you think some of these are?
Well, this, this particular one is probably ten feet if I measured it, I have to measure it, but it's, it's roughly ten to twelve feet that goes between the, each properties, right?
And then back here, you're putting.
We put six to eight feet around that, right?
How far do you think this house is from this right here?
Well, right here, you mean the distance wise?
Yes.
Well.
From this house to that?
Again, I would, I would estimate that's thirty feet. You mean between the two houses, or between the house and your lawn?
From here to where, if we put a walking path right here, their back doors probably not.
I, I, so, let's, let's, one second, let me, let me, if you don't mind, Mary. I mean, I have a few different thoughts on the project. So, depending on how we allocate, you know, what, what, let's assume, you know, we're gonna do some four-bay design, meaning we're gonna do some design and catch trash to keep crap out of there. There's gonna be a little bit of ecosystem restoration when we do the four-bay, because we can get away with it right here, right here, and design it. And then I'll catch a lot of the crap that goes in the lake now, right? So, there's gonna be some money from the eight fifty plus the black money that's spent here. We obviously told the feds we're gonna spend a little money on pathway, so what I would say is, we would, you could do pathway in a couple phases, depending on how we got money for it. Okay, as an example, the easy, the easy button here is that we would basically make pathway go down. You know, we have a lot of room to work with over here, it's fairly flat.
And it's nice to walk.
Yeah, you would, you, you, I would say you bring it right, you could bring it right to about here-ish. You know, you maybe as part of the four-bay, you, you, you design a crossing so that you can get over to the side, but you would wanna stop kind of right around here. Uh, you know, best case scenario, maybe you attach to this and go out to here. Maybe you do it that way, right? You could, that way you have a complete one with other, you move from here to here, which might be better than going from here upward by, by some driveway. That's, that's one possibility. This is more tricky through here, because if you, during the day, if you come and look, stand on the deck and look out here, there is a grading change of about six feet, so we don't, there's not enough room to go here safely, you know, on the edge. You see someone's made a patio on our property too. So, I would suggest, from this point, you know, when we get to the pathway, you basically follow the shoreline, but you're already six feet, at least six feet deeper. Those people can only maybe see my head at the top of it as I pass by. You don't build it, you know, along this, cuz it's, it's too steep right here. You build it, you would have to build pathway along the actual water's edge, and that would be nice.
Would it be like, like pile bend?
Right, because it would be from, from here, the, the, the grade is basically at level here, and then these houses start to set, six feet above. And you can build a pathway here, but this is not necessarily the first phase project, cuz it costs a little bit more money to do that. That's how you eventually, what I'm suggesting is, it's, it's fairly, we have a lot of like here, we can easily create our path, go around here, make a nice little area, you know, something like that.
So, here's my thing is like.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have more pressing things to, to work on? Like, can we spend that money on something more?
No, no, you can't. The money, the money that we're getting is being spent on the South Lake. It's not, I can't.
Only on South Lake and you can only take on paths?
Correct. Now, paths, four-bay, so.
Four-bay is gonna be a pretty penny.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, right? The pathway is not expensive at the end of the day. It's only expensive where I've gotta create some land, which is right around this area here, right? But to build pathway, what's that?
Do we need that?
Yes, eventually, what, what I would suggest as your planner is, this is, this is a, a, a gem of the, of the village. It is, it is not just, not just the people that live around it, it belongs to the whole village, and quite frankly, you need to eventually surplus that people have the ability to extend their path and walk around the lake and enjoy all parts of the lake. It is, it is the village's lake, which means all of the residents' lakes. It's a public lake.
Do you think that?
Think of that other side's gonna be too expensive.
The.
We could get free money and you spend it.
But do you think any of that will just have to do matches or anything with?
But this one, we're not doing a match with.
That's what I was, that's, that's.
How much is the ea, the easier side? How much is that gonna cost us?
Start singing.
The first side, the one closer to the community building?
Right here?
How much is that?
So, I, I can prepare that.
Mike just mentioned that the engineering for this is gonna be quite a bit more expensive as well too.
Right, I feel like we're getting.
I just wanna make sure everybody is on the same page.
But you have to have an engineer to get, you have to get an engineer to get more money.
Here's my issue with all of this, is I feel like we're probably getting our, ahead of ourselves a little bit.
But, before we say this, that's why I'm bringing it to you now, because he's getting ready, you can't change it. I, I'm not advocating for it or not, but you can't, once we do this thirty, we have to get to thirty percent in order to apply for the permit. You can't change the project while you're doing, before like the dredging and all of that stuff, because the permit is technically to do the dredging.
The permit overall, the dredging, it'll be, it'll be thirty percent of what an entire project would be.
So, if you don't engineer it with the lake, you can't engineer it.
Can you only engineer that side?
Yes and no.
Yes. Well, you can do whatever you wanna do, but then you can't add that later.
You can't do it in stages.
So, so they, and you don't wanna do it, it will cost you more money, so.
Can you engineer the whole thing and only execute half of it?
Correct, but then you're throwing away money.
No, well.
You're throwing, he said that this would be quite a bit to engineer.
He does.
No, what I'm saying is like, let's, we ran out of grant money, so we can only afford to do half of it.
We're not running out of grant money.
We have eight hundred thousand.
Quick question, just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this bottom half is basically an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, if I understand that correctly. The top, North Lake is about a?
Well, you got, you got, we, I'm just giving you examples of where you can spend your two fifty, right? Because two fifty, you have, it's for pathways, you own the village, and so there's where you all spend, that's a good example.
And my next question to, to the North and the South Lake is, with the money allocated for the grant, we can, we can precisely do this project, correct?
This is just talking about, all we are talking about right now is pathways and the potential of filling in a little bit. This eight hundred fifty thousand dollars is not touching the dredging or anything, but.
But, but that money does go towards the.
Correct, the correct, yes.
If, if you could spend, look, you, you, this, you know, this here and this part here is not, is not a super expensive pathway. I'll, I'll send you a quote base on all we did for, for Minerva Lake Road, based on that. Pathway's not super expensive. The four-bay will be more expensive, the engineering will cost some money, but you have money to spend on that, and plus, you spend money on the engineering thirty percent or more, because that engineering allows us to go out and get more grant money. Because we said, we've got a project engineered, and here's what we need from a guest, from an estimate, guess in this standpoint, right? So, when, when we go forward and apply for more grants, it's always nice to have the engineering done, it's in kind, right? It counts toward projects, it's good to do, and it's something sitting there on the shelf waiting to be actively launched when the money comes in.
But the per, but again, the permit is only good for five years.
So, if I may to say something, I feel like, if we did do this, it'd be setting ourselves up for the future as well as the dredging, and we have this knocked out, and we, lack of a better term, taking grant money to improve our lakes.
Correct.
So, this is like a win-win-win.
It, it is, I look at it that way too.
I like that.
It's, I think the engineering part's important, and I think it allows you to move forward in different sections, cuz we're not gonna stop applying for the grants, right? And if you're lucky, we receive, just to give you an example, we receive a, under, under Republican-controlled Congress with a Democratic representative. If we have a, if you're lucky, get a Democratic House elected in the fall, we have the ability to get, can I ask for one, no, just so you know the amount of asphalt, I got eighty-five acres of dirt over there. If we have a Democratic-controlled House with a Democratic rep, we will get more money. That's simply how it works.
So, it is our hope at some point to be able to, I'm gonna call it, clean up the shoreline, get rid of the dead and, and, um,
Yes.
It's not indigenous, invasive, invasive trees.
Indigenous or what we want.
Um, so, so my question is, when we do that, will that eliminate, um, especially on what, looking at it this way, is the self and actually think, I think it is, or the West? But anyway, the bottom on this picture. If we get rid of the dead and invasive trees, is that going to eliminate some of, like, what is shoreline now? Because it's really just the tree roots and that sort of thing?
Not necessarily, no. I think, I think when, when we do project like this, one important aspect that we need is, especially for this, cuz tree removal was the third wheel of this whole thing, that, cuz obviously we need to remove trees and clear back from buffers and. Because obviously we need to remove trees and clear back for buffers at a standpoint. We're still starting to make a determination on that. And trees you're going to remove anyways when you put pathway in. So obviously, the tree survey is the first step, and we talked about that with Mike at our meetings. Because you, you need to have a very accurate tree survey, which also includes the health of the trees, what kind of trees they are. So you'll know invasive, non-invasives, you know, at that stage of the game.
Why do we need that tree survey?
Because it's very important when you're planning out the pathway.
What if the path?
Trees are healthy, if you can move the pathway.
Here's what my question is, is you're putting a pathway on top of where the tree is, healthy or not, wouldn't you have to remove it?
But you also need to take down a giant two-hundred-year oak.
Then you don't have a pathway there.
But that's not true. Look at this whole section here, I don't know what these trees are. But if we, if we, if we can, if we engineer the path and go around what we consider an ancient tree that's also capable, we would do that versus if we go through a bunch of invasive trees, you know, that's when you have to do a tree survey. And you have to do it for multiple reasons, not just for what I'm talking about. It's important to know.
I recall.
It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not the end of the book, it's not the engineering cost or anything like that.
Does that fit for that?
Yes, it's probably.
How much is it going to cost? But when can it happen?
Well, here's the thing, is if we, if we have a tree survey.
Yeah, so you want to plant, that's all part of proper planning.
Right, but now you're adding in how much more time for all of this?
It's just removal stuff. You have to do.
Well, here's my question.
I'm not a fan of doing a tree survey to start with. I feel like we need to get out, we don't have to do a tree survey. If we have rustle trees come out.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You can't, you can't do it that way.
Why? But why? Why?
You can't do a tree survey, you have to know what trees are. You also have to know, we have things, we have certain indigenous species that have certain protections. You have to do a tree survey.
But you're using a licensed tree person that's going to know all of this.
They have to know what trees are in the way, where you're going. I would highly not recommend you do that.
So what happens if we don't?
Right, but now we're going to spend money to put a bid out to do the first part.
That's all part of the overall.
And then you're going to put another bid out to bid for those people. No, Eric, at some point, the village is going to go.
Do the tree, that's not the case.
I'm not ready, okay.
I have hundreds of thousands of dollars right here.
I have to do a tree survey.
Okay, fine, scratch it, we're not doing that then. Find a different.
It's not a serious thing, it's not, you're in a, so we're going to talk about this.
We, we completely understand that the survey is absolutely necessary for an appropriate engineering to happen and everything to go from there. What we're saying is, I'm, I'm speaking for myself. I don't want to wait. I want the dead and invasive trees out of there. I want to see what's left, I want to see what's left. And then we start everything that you're saying. But Eric, I'm, I've lived here five years, this thing hasn't been touched. And it hadn't been touched for like twenty years before I moved in. We have to do something to show our residents that we're attempting as best we can with the resources we have to do what we can to keep at least the South Lake healthy, while doing what we can to make the North Lake area as pretty as possible. We can't wait. That's just me, I just.
You're another, yeah, you need a survey and everything. We're another, we're at least nine months out before you get one person to come touch a tree out there. I would say probably longer than that.
Plenty here, but with time coming, plenty of time.
Okay, but here's the deal, my kid's going to graduate from high school and he's going to move.
I've been here for six years, for six years, we have not cut one of those trees down. And it's every single time, it's what we need to do, this first and then this first and then this first, and we end up nowhere. I've been so, like, now we're going to put this out to bid, which is.
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, that's what we're saying, we do want to cut the trees.
We're not disagreeing with the survey. The problem is, is surveying invasive trees, insert, again, we're not calling some random or asking Brian to go cut these down, we're using a licensed tree person that's going to know not to cut banks down. But saying that, this free money, this free money, this free money, oh, they go so far, eight hundred and fifty thou.
It's not a lot of money. Okay, but then you have to go back and ask for more money.
But we have estimates, we have estimates of over two hundred thousand dollars just for a tree.
In time, how much time are we wasting, big time?
Right, Eric, every single year, there is a new council, every single year, there's this, and the problem is.
Okay, hold on, hold on, guys, stop. Okay, Eric, we're telling you we don't want this and you need to accept that as an answer.
I already said I accept it, you can cut all the damn trees down if you want, that's not the issue.
Why are we still talking about it?
What I'm telling you here is that proper planning leads to good decision-making long-term. And when you do proper planning, even if, even if money comes in a year or two years or three years, the plan is on the shelf and then you act upon that plan over the course of time. This is how good cities and professional cities do things.
We're also talking about plenty of cities that have millions and millions and millions of dollars.
We're not a city, we're a village.
Let me ask you one simple question, and, and I know that we don't have an answer for this, but I have a number of others. What is a tree, what is a tree survey going to cost?
I don't know, but it should be somewhere between seventy-five thousand for this size, so it should be.
Just for the survey? How much is it going to cost us to get to the bid documents to get to the survey?
In time, yeah.
Another fifteen to twenty thousand. We are at a hundred thousand dollars before we touch one tree. And we're also talking six to nine months. I, I, again, I am not in disagreement with a tree survey that would probably cost much less once we got rid of so many more trees, because a tree survey is going to survey all of the trees. Get rid of the dead and invasive trees. I'm not trying to cut down an oak, because again, we're going to use a reputable company that knows what they're doing.
The worst is the arborist.
An arborist. We're going to use a company that is able to do this. So that's where I'm frustrated. I just feel like at some point, putting a survey out of it and then putting the trees out of it and then putting this out of it, we're, we're engineering ourselves into debt.
We don't see it that way, Mary, but that.
I, I know you don't, but I, all I'm telling you is the last two weeks, I have looked at all of these, again, thirty, twenty thousand for this, thirty-five thousand for this. I finally got to the point, my breaking point, that I quit answering emails for seven days until somebody came back so I could have this conversation. Because I'm moving forward on a blue project that I have no idea how we're going to pay for. Lake project, street project, all of these different projects, and I'm just sitting here going, we're not getting anywhere because.
We're stuck in the planning phase. Okay, so here's what I want to say with all of this. Yes, you're saying like good engineering and good city planning ends up with results. We haven't gotten any results, so clearly. Clearly, we're not doing something right, so we're going to change it.
Did you just mean with the lakes?
With a lot of things. I think there's a lot of things that we've talked about ad nauseam and we haven't moved forward. And I think, but can I speak? Thank you. The building has mistakes too, everything does. But here's the thing, it's like, you can be fearful of not moving forward with the correct planning, but you also have to be logical in the way that you're moving forward. I don't think these trees are going to catastrophically damage the appearance of the village, damage the lakes to the point of no return. I don't think we're going to go in there and kill a bunch of trees and be like, oh crud, like we don't have any trees left. We're not being unreasonable about this. What we're saying is there's probably a better, faster and more economical way to go about this than getting a tree survey, taking out the trees we surveyed and then having to get a second one.
Yeah, once you cut out however many trees, you're going to have to.
Like, that is not logical to me.
I'm curious about the second survey that we're discussing.
The second survey.
But, okay, so here's.
We're going to have to modify the first one.
We're going to have to, so here's the thing is like.
And that's not going to be quick.
Trees are marked, tree surveys are usually six inches.
But when we did get that tree survey for, when we were doing East Shore Court, they still cut down the wrong trees, you know, but so like, okay. Right, so like, even when we did all of that correctly, mistakes still happened. So I don't hear this solution as being more beneficial to what we're looking for.
It's a planning document.
Okay, so give me an example of when that was.
I mean, in this fucking plan for six years, I have been here.
Here's my question, what is going to happen if we don't do that?
Well, inevitably, the problem is, is that you need.
No, no, what will happen?
You're going to, you're going to have a wider area for making errors, right? So even though you're right, errors still happen, contractors and that goes back to some supervision, you know.
Correct, so who does the supervision?
Usually you and your G C or somebody like that, larger scale project like this to make sure the wrong trees aren't cut down. Somebody is responsible for that.
Okay, so who is responsible for overlooking when those trees were cut down on East Shore Court?
Who was responsible, I don't think.
I was here.
The G C was.
Okay, so like, guys, like, I don't understand, and I still, I don't think I've gotten a good answer. What's the worst that can happen if we don't do it? We cut down some extra trees. What is the long-term benefit in time or money that we would get from getting that survey? So there's a, so that's what I'm saying. So if you don't have that answer for me, to me, that doesn't seem logical for me to advocate for that.
That's going to be acceptable from what I've heard this evening, so it doesn't really matter what I say.
No, it does, I'm asking your expert opinion, but so.
The efficiencies and if your trees be damned, you know, it doesn't really matter in that case. You guys do what you want to do in this case. I'm telling you from a best practices standpoint, you take a tree survey from a certain, certain circumference.
Okay, so here's the deal.
You should have planned out, you should have helped plan out, you know, where the pathways go, I'm finishing. You go where the pathways go, you avoid killing the trees you don't like, you have better supervision. It is a part of the whole planning document that you move forward on. You do not want to take my advice, do not take it, move forward the way you want to. I have two of my advice.
Okay, so here's the deal. This mannequin approach of all or nothing is not how life works, okay? So if I go to a patient or a patient comes to me and says, hey, you know, I have trouble with wound healing or whatever, and I say, well, the textbook, the gold, the gold standard answer is you have to do this, this and this, and the patient says, I have arthritis and I can't do it. I, you know, can't drive and I can't do this. That doesn't mean I yell at them and I say, well, that sucks to be you, see you never, you're never going to get better. You have to talk to the people and work with them together to find an acceptable solution that works for them, that is worthwhile, and it may not be the gold standard, and it may not be a best practice, but it, it should be the solution that is best for that particular scenario. And that is what we pay you to do and that is what we're asking. So you saying, you, well, if you guys.
My advice.
Right, but if that doesn't work for us, why, do you have a plan B for us?
There's not a plan B to do the best planning possible, okay? There's a plan, there's a willy-nilly approach and you can go more of your gut approach, and those usually don't work out as well. You pay that from experience in front of.
So you're saying that every, no, hold on. So you're saying that every time any path has ever been put in, there was a village planner that said, get a tree survey? And if you didn't, the path blew up in some sort of explosion and fell into the lake and that was it?
Any, again, any of these municipalities that are professionally run in this area, when you are going through a forest area, you take a, a tree survey so you can help plan where the path goes with least damage to the most precious trees that you want to preserve, okay? That's what I can tell you. If the object is to take out a bunch of invasives, you also want to know from a, see, you don't, you don't do a survey from a certain circumference level, let's just call it six inches here for the best practices. Because those are generally younger trees, they grow up to that point fast, and you don't worry about those. You worry about your trees that are, are, are preservable, that are your more, you know, assets to the community, your big oaks. You know, those kind of trees as an example, all right? You want to know where those are at, okay?
Why, eyeballs?
Because you can avoid those, and you can also avoid the root systems, which are fairly widespread, because if you go cutting pathway, you know.
So, okay, so here's my other question is why, why is an arborist not qualified to do?
Arborist is a part of, part of the survey, but you want to plan it out on the, on the map so that you know where you're taking the pathway.
I suppose I have one question, and my question would be, I mean, believe me, I, I absolutely, you know, respect the, you know, the experts and, you know, defer to their judgment whenever possible, but I guess my question would be, if we have, you know, someone to build the path, why, why would, why would they plow straight through, you know, three-foot diameter oak instead of going around it? I guess, is there not something in two of them?
Sometimes they say, there's not contractors, what I will simply tell you is, contractors today are going to build the path of where the plants also build the path.
That's not true, and listen, I talked to Mike and there were three trees, but that's not, but what you're saying isn't true.
So, so in this particular case, that's the truth, contractors are going to go straight through where they're told to go, and they're going to cut down the trees that are within the waves. And the other problem is, if you go by certain, certain tree species, that some of them can take more damage than others, they don't, they don't survive well when there's construction action around, right? And you need to know that an arborist is part of that solution, because they can identify and tell you, hey, you've got this tree here, it's looking in good shape. And he's going to, they're going to identify trees that are not in such good shape, that really you can go ahead and call, and it's, you know, that may be a better way to go than attacking a tree that's in much better shape.
Eric, if we take the trees out, if we hire a professional arborist to come and take out the dead and invasive, then the process can begin, is that correct?
I know this is a rude statement, you can do it that way too. I'm just saying, at the end of the day, what I'm saying, before you go and plan a large pathway project in a forest area, you need to do a tree survey.
And we, we totally want that as part of the pathway planning project. What we're saying is, we would like to do something to help the health of this lake in particular before, you know, six months from now. And to us, this makes a lot of sense. Then, when your survey person comes in, won't they have almost like a more cleared area to look at?
It's, this is where I misunderstand the reason, this is fine, I just, I agree with what your statement is, okay? My understanding was you were just going to go in there and cut everything down and worry about a tree.
No, we're just going to clean it up. No, 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 no.
We want to clean up the dead and.
And do the survey.
This is the time period that you, you need to do it now, if you're going to cut trees. Because you, you won't get in trouble with the bats, which are, you know, out after October here.
Okay, I think things make a lot more sense now.
Yeah, so here's the other thing too, is like, when we were.
We go in there and we take down the fallen trees, we're not going to clean up the lake. Say if we go in five, this is just an example, five, six feet away from the shoreline, if it looks the same rock as science, if the damn thing looks dead, you take it down, if it's on the ground, get it out of there. So, you know, we, I think the village would like to just do that, but at the same time, I understand your point that, hey, if you do survey it, they're going to survey it anyways. The things that have come down, let that cover the bill basically. Why us, why would the village pay for it if we have grant money to pay for it? That's one, you know, thing. So it's kind of like.
It's not an unlimited fund.
No, not in this case, but.
We're planning it either way.
We plan things out.
But at the same time, like, looking forward in the future, I think that the village likes to, would like to look forward in, to not only be a little bit more in-house, but also finding ways to, to save a little bit of money so we can maximize some of these costs and, you know, use more of that.
Minimize costs.
Minimize costs, I'm sorry, to maximize.
Oh, say that.
Yes.
Maximize the grants.
Maximize the grants, correct.
Right, and the other thing too is like, when we were doing that Jordan Road project, I was like, those three trees are beautiful. And guess what? Mike rerouted that pipe so we could save those three trees. I'm not an arborist, but guess what? Those trees are still there. Like, saying that the contractor is going to plow through those trees, I don't know if that's an accurate statement, because sometimes it's so much.
Changed the plan.
I did change the plan, but I can, but here's the thing, I could, I, no tree survey, I can go out there and be like, wow, that tree survey says that's a junk oak. But I like the way that it's turning and so does everybody else. It's like a subjective thing. And guess what? What would that mean for us? We would maybe save that one.
I think that's the biggest part is.
Is this is so subjective in so many ways.
If the tree survey is not an objective item, it is an objective item, it gives you data that then you can, you can do your subjective decisions.
Right.
Having data that's just going to sit on a counter is what I don't want. No, okay, I know that, but we have had other things that have just sat on the counter.
Right.
And the problem that we have, and I'm just, I, I, this is not a, everybody getting nervous. In one year and three months, we are going to have potentially four new people sitting up here. I don't know who those four people are, but I know that there are plenty of people in the village that don't want to touch anything over there. So I want to keep in mind that we could potentially spend the next year getting surveys and doing this and doing this, and then this next group come in and say, I'm not doing this. So I need to make sure that we at least have started projects that can be done before this group is done. And if we don't start doing something, nothing is going to happen.
We're just wasting time.
And it's important for everyone to hear, we are not saying get a survey and then hire an arborist. We're saying, hire an arborist, get rid of the dead and invasive, clean up the shoreline, which I can only assume.
Make it easier.
Would make it easier, I'm not, I'm not a survey person, I'm not any of that. But that way we'll know what, what we have, we'll know how many of the trees are really just like creating shoreline and where we really are. So, and, and, and I, we know the professionals can do it, but Eric, I, I just don't want to live here six more months without doing anything
I think the other.
To my, to help my village.
The other part to this is, my understanding is we don't have any of this money yet. So, and we don't have the rules to this money yet, which means we potentially can't even get a survey done and expect to be reimbursed for it until we at least have documentation that says we can be reimbursed.
What I have here, the way I always explain from the, I'm choosing.
I got you.
Legislative guys that we, they will pass at some point, you're probably post-election in the current group.
Okay, but don't count your chickens off where they're at.
All my point is.
And then we get it for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, you're not even talking about it until twenty twenty-five to start that part of it. And that's all we're trying to say is, nobody's saying that a tree survey is stupid. It's, we feel like. It's, we feel like, I feel like, we can move forward on getting part one.
Yep.
Call it eight parts, but at least some of us feel like, and I, and I, and maybe it's just so we feel better, maybe nobody else in the village cares, but at some point, it has been six years, I'm gonna continue to say that, I am all close to seven. I did two years of council, four years, and I'm in my la, my seventh year. And we have not done one damn thing to that lake, and you know what? I'm not solely to blame, I've had six council people that I cannot get to do it, and when I know that I have four new people potentially coming in here, I don't know that anything is ever gonna happen, so, planning to plan.
It's a waste of time.
Knowing that in one year, now, again, every two years you're gonna have a change, I get that, but four members is a much different avenue than two. And, again, we all know there's people in this village that would love to be sitting up here that will not agree with anything you guys have said. So, I just don't want to be sitting in this position in July of next year going, damn, I wish I would have at least started something, because I feel like at least if we're making progress, the next group will continue to make progress.
So here's my other thing too, what is like, okay, we get rid of all those like dead trees and invasive species and be like, oh, sorry, like the shoreline is in such bad shape, we're gonna have to reinforce it to put a path down, or blah, 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 blah. Like you don't know what you have until you look at it, you can't even look at it.
I kinda keep going back to the, in my brain right now, like I, there was a conservation buffer zone that was recommended by Jacobs in the plant section, there was a ten foot wide path, unmoated, vegetated area.
Right.
Correct, no trees, everything is.
That was kind of, was that? Yeah, so, it's not great, I automatically will just mow down ten foot of trees from the shoreline, and just like, let's start there, and then you can move outside of that, because that's what the conservation
Right. And then do a tree survey.
Buffer zone is all about is removing that, and then, also maybe invasive or dead trees as well.
And my mind goes to this, I can only assume that a survey is going to be much less expensive, doing a survey on X amount of trees versus
Right.
all of this that we already knew had to come out, and that's all my point has been, I've never said I don't want to do a survey, I've never said I don't want to do that stuff. I just feel like we at least need to, we have the ability to move forward, and it started with you guys just a couple of weeks ago.
Let's do it.
And then as soon as I went and said, this is what we need to do, and you guys said, let's just get a couple of these started, it was, no, we have to do a survey, no, we have to do this, no, we have to do this, and I, I I just feel like once again, now I'm back in this circle of nothing getting done again.
Okay, I have a suggestion, can we just move forward with the plan of say, eight feet around the lake, if it's dead, just take it out? This way it does two things, we start, we're setting ourselves up for another stepping stone if we do it, as well as we finally got something out of the way and done, is that possible? And then, cause we don't even know if we are doing this path, do we know if we're doing the path, that way.
You have to plan now, so, there's still, there's still some discussion, what we spend.
Yeah.
I just didn't wanna, right, I'm just saying like, I think that if we did this now, this kills two, you know, this gets this out of the way, we have to do it anyways. And then maybe if the council people aren't sitting up here next year, for example, that don't want that path, I don't know, I'm just saying.
It, right.
You know, like that won't waste some time, and we're not getting something done, and.
It won't be a negative.
It'd be a cost of damage.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a bad thing to take this taken out, you know, if we question the tree being a long, you're gonna need to leave it alone until, uh, especially if it's come, you know, whatever, but.
I feel like. I think at some point.
Five foot is just.
You say, engineer, I think where we left it with Mike was engineer ball, um, as far as the walking path and as far as all of that, and then we can decide what parts, you know, we will put the walking path or we won't put the walking path. Um, there was one more part now that we've all, like, I think we finally got to that, will you show them the part that you wanna cover, cut in on this one? And I don't, let me rephrase that, I'm not blaming this on Eric, I feel like we're all, we were all on the same page on this, and help you can explain why.
You mean my Eric?
Yes.
Okay, sure, so, one second while I bring up some, so this, this area here, this definitely part of the trash control. So right here, you've got your booms, and, and it flows into this corner, and it just builds up, and unfortunately, one of our residents, uh, here at the Grove's household, he sends us pictures regularly concerning that, let me see if I can find it right here. So this is actually the lake here, you see, it's not very pretty, uh, this is where all the stuff just builds in, you, you, it just looks horrible, right?
More like there.
I mean, and just, and he's already spent some significant money, and I, I told him, I said, you don't need to spend that money, and I said, that's terrible, I said, I know, we don't want to spend four thousand dollars, three thousand dollars a month, trying to clean it up, right? And so it, it just, it's just a terrible condition over here, right, and so, I mean, we totally agree, it needs to be adjusted. The solution, or the temporary solution is that we're, we're looking at throwing a similar type of boom from this point to this point, about a hundred and forty feet. And that will at least until we get the lake re-engineered, you know, in short term, it'll help control the trash, right? That's at least the, there, there are trash booms that aren't so expensive, I'm getting some quotes as we speak, but essentially it'll go from here to here, and keep the stuff here, and so what happens is the trash can, you know, be controlled, and then of course it gets pushed over the boom during storm events and goes down, which is the best of neither, but at least we have a better able, ability to keep it out of the back, you know, rent from the rear of their armpit. What we would do long-term, you know, when we re-engineer lakes, this section essentially is built and reclaimed. So we would, we would form a, a nice shoreline here, you would fill this in, it's more usable space, parkland, why it's anyways, we could, we have the opportunity to, you know, reclaim and do different things with it, and prevent that stuff from building up over the course of time, which is what we want to do.
Got the nice wetland, you got button bush, you got spice bush, you got all kinds of names that could go there.
Yeah, but that's like a huge area that no one.
Right, and it's, you, you're allowed to do that without triggering some longer-term permits, you know, so we would still keep it within, from, um, Mike's investigation, we'd still keep it within a six-month permit, we filled too much of the lake in, more than, I see several acres, so.
Yeah.
I remember correctly. This, this still puts the bill for trash control, and, and it means our needs for what we can do from, you know, utilizing the current grant money that we have.
And the forebears can help with that in the future too.
Right, trash control here, by the way, and there's also the ability at the front end of it, not just waiting for it to get down, it, it just builds up in these people's yards. But we have a significant amount of right-of-way to work with here, this is a reserve area here, we have access, actually part of the lake here with the right-of-way. You know, we could design something that's part of that to help control the trash at the front end, and access it, you know, from where our right-of-way is here too, to clean it out on a semi-regular basis.
I'd love to see that.
Right, so that way that kicks up from even getting down to the lake in the virtual, these are things that are still being, you know, hashed out and discussed, but there, you have fortunately some ability to catch it before it even gets into the stream system there.
So this is again, it's just to kind of give you guys an update, I'm filling in a couple of little sections, um, with the small amounts that we're filling in does not push us into the other permit. So, keeping with just doing a little bit to make this, um, honestly, a little bit more of an affordable project, and, and because it does cut a little bit of cost by doing this, um, it does make things a little bit easier to put paths and to put those types of things. So, that was, again, and the walking path, like I said, this is, the top part is much easier, the bottom part may be something that, again, it's gonna depend on, um, great money that, you know, comes in next year or even the following year, so. But, getting it engineered is really where we are, is, we either do it or we don't. It is going to cost us more to engineer it now, but it's gonna cost us way more to engineer it later in the event that we do decide that we want it. If we just decide it's never gonna happen, then we don't engineer it, so, and the only reason that I brought it is, I don't live there, but I'm gonna tell you that from what I've already heard, you're going to have a lot of people, it is very close to the backs of their yards. Now, I'm not telling you guys, you know, anything that you don't already know, this is the lake, this is the Village of the River Parks Lake, it's not their lake.
This is the people's life.
Um, I'm saying that, that probably just really pissed off people, but that's not what I'm trying to do. Um, being accessible to all of the residents is, is nice, but it's also twenty, thirty feet, you know, potentially twenty-five feet from their backyards.
There's a football field in my backyard.
Correct, and I would agree, I'm on, so, you know, if, if, again, I'm not advocating for none, I'm just merely telling you guys that this is something that, you know, it, it's gonna be a change, there's gonna be people that are upset, there's gonna be all of that, it's one of those that, um, you're gonna have kids playing on this and yelling and screaming and doing the things that they do, so. It just needs engineered or not, and we're leaning towards engineering it just so it's done. But if you guys are, uh, not touching it because, with a ten-foot pole, then we just need to not do it, so, because we are spending money to have it engineered.
Before I start saying.
And again, the walking path would be cut, potentially covered by other funding, not our funding, so, it's not something that would cost the village money, it's not other than the engineering part to it. Um, and I don't know that we can't recoup some of that money, we, we haven't seen the grant information yet.
We'll be able to source some of our engineering money back based on what we do.
So, yeah, we're assuming that we, we will, we just haven't, it hasn't even passed the house yet, the two hundred and fifty thousand.
That's a separate, separate statement, we're receiving, that's strictly for pathway, you can apply that towards, they don't have any construction, but it's.
Okay, so, again, we may have to, we may not be able to get all of it out or this or that, again, I, this is merely for me to tell you guys, this is what we're moving forward with unless somebody tells us otherwise, um, and I'm merely pointing it out because you guys are gonna be the ones to get, and he's not gonna get it, he's gonna have to listen to it. I'm, I'm gonna get it, but nobody else, I mean, you know, we're, you guys are the ones that are gonna have to decide if that's something that you guys are interested in doing and want to do, and again, this is a layer for the village.
I believe this to be fair. I believe this to be fair.
I think that the North Lake pathway idea is brilliant, like we finally connected.
I like North Lake.
I think that's been needed happen for quite some time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I like the South Lake, well done there, uh, and this is coming from being here for this many years. When I was a kid, like, we weren't on, the North Lake, you weren't allowed to go there at all, cause I remember.
Well, no, you're, you feel like you're in some kind of yard.
You're gonna drown.
Yeah, and then like, even the South Lake or whatever, you got all these people paying taxes to fix a lake now, you know? And then not be enjoying this lake, so it's like, I think, this is, you know, looking towards the, I know a lot of people right now are not gonna like this, but looking towards the future, I hate to say it, a hundred years from now, fifty years from now, how cool is that gonna be?
Yeah.
To, to actually see your own lake that you're, I don't know.
It's gonna be dead.
You should definitely report on this.
Hundred years from now.
Yeah. Fifteen years from now, maybe, a hundred years from now, it'll be dead, what are you talking about, I don't care.
You guys agree, or?
My only concern is it feels almost invasive on the other side, like it just feels like I would be like creeping around in people's backyards and that, it gives me the ick, I don't like that feeling.
I think with the, what do you think?
I think with the height difference, it's not really gonna.
Yeah, what do you think's happening?
It's the worst, it's like, you're just like, I don't know.
I don't think.
What do you think, seriously, like, the pathway that goes behind over here, that's the same thing, yeah.
I have to, I, I'm not sold on it, I'm not saying no, but it's not an enthusiastic guess.
I think there's a little more, I think you can see more in the people's backyards through the MI section, they would be able to.
Absolutely, if they were, if they're out there lighting out or like, playing with their kids or anything, yeah, I mean, it's all right there open. I don't disagree at all, especially the people with the higher, with the second-story walkouts.
Um, just looking towards the future, I think this is.
A great idea.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
It should definitely happen.
It's a way to connect.
It's a way to, yeah, like, yeah, and we're still, and we're still able to do it while not completely destroying a lake, that's fantastic news.
Senator Tom. Can it be a buffer too, so it's a road?
And. Like you can improve the enjoyment of the lake alongside.
Oh, just to remind you guys, we haven't done.
That's a part of it, I mean, we would keep it as far away from the homes and things like that, like he said, it's gonna be more of like a layered.
Four years, I haven't touched that lake. Actually, they did dredge it once when I was a kid, but after that, we did lay it cleaned up, and that was it, no one did.
We haven't even done lake cleaning at this point.
Yeah, they might sand, yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna put the cart before the horse, and with all of this being said, I do think we have like, we need to have at least like some sort of master plan on what we want as a whole village, instead of being, oh, we gotta do this a little bit here, and, oh, we gotta do this here a little bit, oh, and we gotta figure out a way to connect it.
I think that's where I will tell you, it has just become extremely overwhelming in the last couple of weeks, because we have so many different.
Yep. Like, we need a master map, plan.
I think as, this is my recommendation, you guys say your piece.
I hate it.
I would, I would say to administration, from the discussions I have, council would like to spend some money on bringing in someone that can help us think through what a master plan looks like and help us organize it for the village.
Yep.
So, not saying spend a lot of money, but just kind of, let's pull all this stuff together, let's kind of put it on paper, let's map it out a little bit, so we can see what happens in what years, and then we can start making some plans.
Well, I think the hard part about this, and don't take this wrong, I'm not disagreeing with you, is, a lot of the discussion that we're having is, these are things that we, we want to do with grant money, this is things that we want to do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And that money, as we feel like we have a great opportunity to get, it's never guaranteed, and it is difficult to say, I wanna do this, I wanna do this, especially if it is matching money, or especially if it is this. Like right now, we're investigating, you know, and this is, okay, now I'm the one that brought it to everybody's attention, but it's stressing me out, because we're spending money to try to get a grant for the pool building, in which we desperately need, but it's a matching grant, and I'm not saying that we don't have the money for it. But, if we're doing that, and nobody expected this garage to be anywhere near where it's at, the dredging and, you know, all of it. If we can't get some of the engineering back with some of this grant money and all of that, that is still outgoing money. There are so many different things that, I will just say, looking at our expenses from our engineering cost makes me nauseous.
Oh, okay.
And, knowing how much that we've spent on them, and some of these projects have not moved forward, makes me even more nauseous. The lakes being one of them, I mean, this isn't the first time we've spent money on things with the lake, and we are still sitting in the same position. So, it's not, uh, you guys have failed, I've failed, engineering's failed or anything, it just becomes, we have to, as much as we know, all of us know that we need to have these things done, but we are not.
To fully commit, like, just, yeah.
Well, I just, I think that sometimes there is the lost sight, that we are not Westernville, we are not some of these large, we don't have the large corporations, we don't have all of this stuff.
Right.
And, we do have our own police department, we do, you know, I just do not wanna be the person that puts our village into. That, I mean.
Yeah, understandable.
Yeah, and looking at some of this stuff, again, I'm not in disagreement, we need some sort of plan, we need some sort of whatever, because right now, it's kind of, oh, look, we can get a grant for the pool, let's move forward on that, and then you go, okay, great, how are we gonna come up with, and I'm not saying we don't have the hundred thousand, or whatever. But we just saw that this was six hundred thousand dollars to do a garage, so what do we think this building is gonna cost?
Right.
So.
It's pretty rough.
We should get a grant, but we're still gonna have to write a check for the rest. And it's still gonna have to be engineered, and it's still gonna have to be this, and we already know how much we spent with MKSK just to talk about it. We never went anywhere, and we've spent, what, thirty thousand?
I firmly believe that people will look back on this time as one of great progress.
Progress is only good if you end up getting something done.
Well, we, yes, we're, we are accomplishing things, but.
I have a lot that's not been accomplished.
People would look on your tenure as a, as a good effective one.
Well, I'd like to see some progress on a couple of these things, so, I'm not saying we're broke, I'm not saying any of that, but I don't wanna be there. I, I just know that we have a lot of large projects, we have a lot of street projects, we still have sewer projects, and if anybody does remember that we just had a sewer project, we put off for a year because we didn't have the funding to do it at the time we wanted to do it easily, and again, all of that needs engineering, which is gonna be another, so. I don't wanna say that we have to slow down on some of these projects, I think we need to prioritize a little bit more.
Yeah, well, I think that's what, um, coming up with that plan helps us do it.
So anyways, thank you guys, I know this has been a long, over two hours, and I told you guys it was gonna be this long, that's why I didn't wanna do it last Thursday, uh, last Thursday when there was only gonna be three members here, because I know it was a lot. Do you guys have anything? And I know you're gonna say no, even if you did, because everybody wants to go home.
Then you know the answer.
So Thursday, um, if you do have something, just bring that Thursday, or if anybody wants to retouch on these, anything that we talked about tonight, um, bring that Thursday. If there's anything legislatively that you guys wanna talk about, we are gonna have some legislation coming, um, because some of the engineering has gone over on one project, so I think we're doing it then and now. Um, there's a couple of different things that I think you guys are gonna see, I'm going to get the legislation updated for the maintenance garage. I'm going to do a couple of those things, where I should, Barb and I will, um, we'll get a couple of those things done and ready for you, and we'll try to either get it reset back out before Thursday, or, um, I'm sure she'll get reset back out before Thursday, so, that way we can kind of go over all of that. So, that way we can kind of go over all of that stuff in Thursday, so who's Thursday? Does anybody know? I'm sorry.
What do you mean?
I think it's legislation.
Finance.
Oh, I don't know. Do you mean the committees?
Yeah.
I have safety.
Finance, safety and legislation?
Yeah, that sounds right.
So if anybody has anything for those, if you guys wanna email back and forth or, you know, whatever, just to get those on the table, um, go for it, but I, I don't have any. If I do, we'll talk about Thursday. I'll go through my list tonight. Jason, do you have?
Does anybody want a puppy?
Nobody want a puppy?
Puppy?
No, but I've built an owl we can have.
No.
So cute, but.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, alright.
Nature?